Okay, I think, I think we should start. And although you had to, you wanted to make a quick announcement?
Yes, thank you for that. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alda Arias. I'm going to be the interpreter for today's event. I will be speaking in English and Spanish if needed. But I've been told that this meeting will primarily be in English going into Spanish. So I will now proceed to give instructions to Spanish speakers as to how to join the interpretation channel and then the meeting will begin. Muy buenas tardes. Soy Alda Arias, intérprete para el evento de hoy. Bienvenidos. Voy a ser la persona que va a estar interpretando la reunión, que mayormente se realizará de inglés a español. Es decir, si usted es un hispanohablante, en este momento, por favor, se le solicita que siga las siguientes instrucciones. Primero que todo, si está en una computadora, por favor, busque en el menú de Zoom el mapa mundi o globo terráneo, el icono que tiene ese aspecto y, por favor, haga de clic y seleccione Language Interpretation o Interpretación de idioma y de ahí, por favor, seleccione Spanish o español. Si se encuentra en una tableta o en teléfono inteligente, diríjase al menú de los tres puntos, que también se puede llamar More o Más, igual, por favor, seleccione Language Interpretation o Interpretación de idiomas y después Spanish o Español. Les pido, por favor, encarecidamente, en este momento, seguir estas instrucciones y, por favor, si escuchan debidamente, mostrar un pulgar al aire en su cámara o un pulgar virtual a través del icono si es lo posible, para indicar que están escuchando debidamente. Ya ahora sí se va a encender el módulo. Gracias. Thank you, Matthew. If you could enable the module, please. Thanks.
This is the only thing I'm supposed to do tonight, so here we go. I've started it. Okay, so I see that the Brooklyn Borough President, Antonio Reynoso, is with us. And so, I guess, Oliver, would you like to do a quick introduction for the Brooklyn Borough President?
I believe Ronda was going to.
Well, hi, I'm giving you the introduction because I'm from the Brooklyn Swab Legislative Committee and we're so delighted to have you here with us to say a few words as our Brooklyn Borough President. Congratulations and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ronda, and to all the Swabs. So happy to see you here. In my previous life as a sanitation chair, I can't tell you how invaluable the work that you all did was for me and for the city of New York. So I just can't tell you how happy I am. So give me one second because I gotta, I have folks that prepare for things for me. No, no, so I just wanna, just seeing everybody's faces, by the way, I just, I'm, I'm really happy. You guys are bringing a lot of joy, so I'm extremely grateful to see you all. Including Bridget. It's so nice to see you. And thank you for everything. You are a superstar and really grateful for what you are and who you are and all the great work that you did. Really setting the trend and allowing us to have an inside-outside game, I guess is what I would call it, and like moving things like what we're doing today. So I guess officially I'll make a, or formally make my statement. So thank you all for joining today. I am Borough President Antonio Reynoso and on behalf of the Brooklyn Solid Waste Advisory Board and all the other Swabs, I want to welcome you to today's hearing on Extended Producer Responsibility, AKA EPR. We all know that Americans use too much stuff and that stuff comes with too much packaging. The idea of EPR is not to require producers to handle post-consumer waste, but to incentivize them not to create so much waste in the first place. This is an issue we've been talking about for a while when I was Chair of the Council's Committee on Sanitation and Solid Waste Management. This is something that's hard to do at the city level since we don't have a lot of producers within the city limits. But now Governor Hokel has written a proposal in the state's budget that would require a statewide needs assessment by 2024, leading toward an EPR program for packaging and paper products by 2026. I'm excited to hear from a panel of experts and the public today about their thoughts on this proposal, how it would work and how it might be improved. And I'm happy to work with my partners in state government on any follow-ups that may come from today's meeting. And my staff will be here for the whole thing and I look forward to the next steps. I just want to thank everybody for giving me an opportunity to present and make my testify, I guess, at this point. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I made this year. I think Lacy's here. There she is. Lacy Tauber, our Legislative Director, but also a lot of folks here know her from back in the day in the council office was doing legislative work. So thank you again. Thank you, Ronda, and thank you.
Thank you.
So we will now begin and L'Oreal, you'll call the first speaker.
And if everyone can please stop video except for the speaker.
All right, my name is L'Oreal Crowder. I'm the Vice Chair of the Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board and I'll be announcing the speakers and guests. Our next speaker is Bridget Anderson from the Department of Sanitation Deputy Chair. You may begin.
Great. Hello and thank you so much. Thank you to the Selma Advisory Boards collectively for your invitation to speak today. I want to acknowledge first your dedication as volunteers in these boards. You are citizens who care deeply about how waste affects your neighborhoods, your city and beyond, and New York City is better off for your advocacy. As mentioned, I'm Bridget Anderson, Deputy Commissioner for Recycling and Sustainability at the New York City Department of Sanitation. I am pleased to provide comments on the Extended Producer Responsibility Act, which is part RR of New York Governor Hokel's proposed fiscal year 23 budget for transportation, economic development, and environmental conservation. We strongly support this bill and its passage in the budget. I will be providing a DSNY municipal agency perspective, as I know you will have a lot of other perspectives about specific components of the bill. So this is an overview of just where we are in supporting EPR generally. DSNY is the world's largest sanitation department, collecting more than 12,000 tons of garbage and recycling every day from residents and institutions. In addition, we are facilitating the transition of the city's privately handled commercial waste, another 10,000-plus tons a day, to a new waste management system. At this scale, DSNY is all too familiar with the challenges of a complex waste industry where the responsibility and cost of managing waste falls on the shoulders of consumers, businesses, and municipalities. Last year, DSNY collected approximately 690,000 tons for recycling. This is an immense achievement and yet we still estimate that a similar amount of recyclables still up in our residential garbage. As we pursue our goal of sustainable waste management, we know more needs to be done and it all costs money. New York City must make painful trade-offs every year as decisions are made about how to best leverage the city's budget, your money, to improve the lives of New Yorkers. To pursue zero waste, frankly, we need help. Creating a circular flow of resources requires all parts of the system have to have vested economic interests to ensure that consumer product design is compatible with recycling collection, processing infrastructure, and markets, and that we minimize the environmental burden of our waste. Governor Hokel's bill requires the producers of products and packaging to share the responsibility of recycle, recycling, to have skin in the game, to endure fluctuating commodity markets, and to ensure that what gets collected is actually recycled. Producers, for the first time in New York, would be required to pool and coordinate the use of financial investments to improve recycling and environmental outcomes. Rather than brand-specific efforts that have a diluted impact, EPR provides a mechanism to drive financial investments towards collective set of goals. Beyond financial reimbursement for recycling operations across the state, the Extended Producer Responsibility Act incentivizes improvements in product design to minimize waste and maximize recyclability and provides for the coordination of targeted investments in recycling infrastructure to capture materials that have traditionally been difficult to collect, process, and reuse. What does this mean for DSNY? Items covered by the bill make up approximately 40% of DSNY's overall waste stream, some of which is currently recycled, some of which is not recyclable. We estimate that the reimbursement mechanism could provide New York City with up to $100 million every year, $100 million every year in private investment to support and improve our recycling outcomes. Freeing up this taxpayer money unlocks opportunities for us to double down on our efforts to train and equip buildings and their staff to better manage their waste while maximizing recycling, to expand our environmental education, and to pilot new and innovative strategies to reduce the burden of waste for New Yorkers. We strongly support the successful passage of this bill and will continue to participate in detailed discussions to clarify components and to support consensus building and compromise on the provisions under debate. For example, the needs assessment, the producer plan obligations, and the regulatory processes articulated in the bill will be important to inform and refine the program over time, such as definitions of recycling, readily recyclable, how reasonable activity-based costs are to be determined, that's basically how much we get reimbursed, and how often the composition of the waste stream must be calculated. DSNY is pleased by the fact that cities with a population of 1 million or more have a role in the advisory board, allowing New York City to provide its insights directly into these determinations. We will be working to adjust the state preemption language in the current bill, which we interpret as overly broad. It's a broad preemption of all local laws governing packaging and paper recycling, potentially putting our 30-plus-year-old recycling mandate at risk and leading to disruption of how recycling works operationally in New York City. As with other EPR bills in New York, it is important to get the mechanisms in place and to allow for flexibility as conditions involve, for example, the New York State Electronics Recycling Law, an EPR law, which further, for which further refinement was identified after the initial bill passed, it has nonetheless helped to facilitate a 40% reduction in electronics ending up in New York City's residential garbage. That is a huge win, even as we evolve and try to improve the program. Let's not lose this opportunity to advance a transformative policy for packaging and paper products in New York City and New York State. Thank you very much and those are my comments and I look forward to hearing the detailed comments and opinions of everybody else on this panel.
Thank you very much, Bridget, and I really appreciate the time you've taken to speak with us today. And I think we should move on to our next speaker.
Our next guest is Tom Outerbridge, Sims Municipal Recycling. You're all set.
Thanks. Thank you. And yeah, thank you Swabs for putting this form together and inviting me. My name is Tom Outerbridge. I'm the President of Sims Municipal Recycling. So we're the private recycling, for those who don't know, as the private recycling partner to the Department of Sanitation, we handle 100% of the metal glass plastic that the department collects curbside in New York from residences and about half of the paper. So we're talking about EPR for packaging. Everyone knows EPR, presumably on this call, we've got it for e-waste and a variety of other materials. Paint is coming next, but packaging is certainly the most transformative if we can get this done and that, as Bridget mentioned, it makes up 40 to 45% of the residential waste stream, at least in New York City where we have good composition data. Everyone knows EPR packaging laws have been in place for decades in Canada and across Europe. It's been very slow to come to the US, but it is here now. Maine and Oregon passed laws last year. This year, we know their laws being considered in Colorado, Washington, Connecticut. I think you have a speaker from Hawaii, perhaps can add them to the list. And in New York State, through the New York Product Stewardship Council, and the Product Stewardship Council of New York is made up primarily by the way of public sector officials who work with counties or solid waste authorities too, and they're responsible for providing recycling services to their residents. The Product Stewardship Council of New York State have been pushing for packaging EPR in New York for many years. Last year, we got quite far with the Senate bill, but it didn't materialize. And this year, as Bridget mentioned, we have it in the governor's budget, so we're, I think, certainly much further ahead than we were this year. The Assembly needs to be part of that process. And then obviously, all those three parties need to take in the feedback and input from all their different constituents and hopefully come together to advance a bill that works for New York, a law that will work for New York State. I did go through the Swab list of questions and comments, a lot of thoughtful and important issues there and I started to write out sort of responses and I ended up with pages and pages and pages and realized it's far too much to really discuss any one of those particular topics for 10 minutes. So I'll try to just at least touch on some of them. But before doing that, there's a couple sort of high-level points that I would bring up. And the first is that we're all going to try to make this bill, this law, as good as we can, but should think that it's really, think of EPR as a living program. It's not static. The world, because the opera, the environment in which the EPR program will operate is not static. If you think about EPR programs that have been in place in Europe or Canada for decades, they have had to evolve to adjust for the advent of e-commerce that didn't exist when these laws started. They're adjusting now to flexible packaging and pouches that we're seeing, adjusted to changing technologies for sorting and processing materials. And they've adjusted to, you know, dramatic changes in the global commodity market, right, with China leaving the, leaving the marketplace for recycled materials. So, so as close as we can get this to perfect is good, but it is going to be, I think the more important thing is that the programming, the law, and the program includes opportunities for adjustment and review because that's, and because that's going to be inevitably required over time. And the second thing is that, to keep in mind, is that today, the status quo, producers of packaging have no direct financial incentive to pick the most environmentally preferable packaging. Certainly, some brands have done very commendable things, but there's no system-wide program to bring producers and have producers have some degree of responsibility for their packaging at the end of its life, right? We don't have any advisory committee. There's no statewide targets. There's no support going back to municipalities. There are no recycled content requirements. So the status quo today is, is zero producer responsibility for their packaging. Just keep that in mind as we try to come up with, with a bill, you're compare, the alternative is, is that status quo. So looking at some of the specific questions and comments that I saw in this one, let's go through that. Is, one was that this law applies just to household packaging and that should also include residential material and that should also include commercial waste. I don't agree with that. It's not that I'm saying commercial waste wouldn't benefit from an EPR program. It's just that they're very, in New York City at least, the sanitation department handles the residential waste stream through one system. Private haulers handle the commercial waste through a separate system. The city is also, as I think Bridget mentioned, going through a major revamping of the entire commercial waste system with zones, franchise haulers, new recycling and composting requirements. We did spend years and Department of Sanitation was very much involved in, in working on the EPR program that is in front of us now to make sure that it worked for the way the residential system is managed. If you were to take the Senate bill from last year or the governor's bill this year and try and apply it to a convenience store or a supermarket or a office building, it's very unclear how that would work. So again, not to say that EPR for commercial waste isn't appropriate. I'm just saying that you can't just simply tack it onto this bill as an add-on. It needs to sort of be tailored to the way the commercial waste system works. There was, there's been discussion about the bottle bill versus this EPR draft. And some people, I guess, concerned that this EPR law is, the intent is to dismantle the bottle bill. I don't read that in the bill. I don't think that's the intent. There is one paragraph that talks about the producer organizations reporting annually on the possibility of including currently covered deposit containers in the EPR program. If people see that as a, as a first step in dismantling the bottle bill, I think that that's, language should simply be taken out of the bill. It doesn't, it doesn't help the EPR bill, particularly if people think that is a, that's a detriment to the bottle bill. The question about whether or not this EPR, the bottle bill, right, all the containers covered under the deposit law are specifically not addressed in this EPR program because they're already in their own EPR program, right, which is the deposit system. People have advocated that this EPR law also include updates to the bottle bill. I don't think we should try to put that in there now only because, as everyone knows, the bottle bill is complicated and very contentious. We've been on, me, our company's been on both sides of that. We were strong advocates of expanding the bottle bill to wine and liquor. The DC, for seven years, the DC even commissioned a study of how to go about doing that. And back in 2019, it was obviously strongly opposed by the wine and liquor industry and it hasn't gone anywhere. There have been other proposed expansions of the bottle bill that we are, the merf, the recycling industry has have opposed. Some municipalities have opposed, so I think those debates will go on. I think trying to add that on to the EPR bill makes it much harder to advance the EPR bill. And I think to keep, keep in mind that, that the EPR bill, we're going after 40 to 45% of the material stream. The deposit can, system, successful as it is, is really going after 1 and 1, 1 to 1 and 1/2% of the waste stream. So I think to somehow try to add it on is, you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater, if you will. There's a lot of other things in there. I know time is up. And I think the discussion about standards and targets and what belongs in there, all very good things to discuss and work out. I think the bill can be improved, certainly, but I hope people will fight to pass it as well as improve it. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Tom. Appreciate it. And I think now L'Oreal will call our next speaker.
We have Eric Goldstein from NRDC.
Thank you very much and good afternoon, folks. My name is Eric Goldstein and I'm the New York City Environment Director at the Natural Resources Defense Council, which, as most of you know, is a national nonprofit legal and scientific organization, active on a wide range of environmental, natural resource, and quality of life issues around the country, across the planet, and right here in New York City, which has been our home since 1970. We've been active on solid waste issues for many decades and we're fortunate enough to be part of the process leading to the passage of the New York City Mandatory Recycling Law of 1989. And one of the provisions that we strongly supported at that time was the creation of the Solid Waste Advisory Boards and for exactly this reason. So we thank all of you for hosting this event, which we hope will be helpful to New York City and New York State and solid waste planners, even beyond that. I'm going to summarize a detailed testimony and I know that this is a very experienced audience in the issues that I'm going to be talking about, but for completeness sake, let me just make a couple of basic points that I suspect most of you are only too familiar with. The consumer goods that we produce and the household wastes that we discard have widespread adverse environmental impacts on our neighborhoods, our city, and our planet. Our throwaway society is responsible for pollution at every stage of the process, from mining and timber cutting and fossil fuel extraction to manufacture and production, to packaging and transportation to retail outlets. And those upstream activities are often major overlooked generators of air and water contaminants. They pose risk to workers in occupational settings and they are generators of climate destroying emissions. The composition of our consumer waste stream has grown increasingly toxic in the decades since World War II. The amount of waste that we generate has grown exponentially across the country. Municipal solid waste has tripled in the United States since 1960. Here in the Big Apple, we discard about 12,000 tons a day from our homes and institutions. That's not counting the commercial and business waste that's handled by the private quarters. And despite the good intentions of many, including our friend Tom Outerbridge at Sims Recycling, less than 20% of the city's household trash is being recycled and reintroduced into commerce. Throwaway plastics and packaging are a large part of the problem. In particular, the manufacture of plastics has compounded so many of our environmental burdens. They're difficult to recycle. They end up dispersed throughout the environment. They are found in every corner of the planet. We have microplastics detected in our own bodies and throwaway plastics and plastics in general have become a major economic profit center for the fossil fuel industry. So if we want to end or address the climate crisis, we must find a way of reducing the ever-growing amount of throwaway plastics in our environment. Of course, among the reasons for the explosion of these single-use plastics has been that manufacturers currently have no incentive and zero responsibility to reduce the waste they generate or to advance recycling by using recycled materials. So the concept of extended producer responsibility that this legislation is targeted at is designed to attack directly these problems. It would incentivize the hierarchy of waste prevention, recycling, and reuse by building it into the pricing structure. It would reimburse municipalities and put recycling on a stable financial setting. It would support local green jobs in recycling industries. And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make a major operational change in the way we produce packaging, plastics, and paper goods and address these products at the end of their useful lifetime. So Extended Producer Responsibility is a legislative concept that we think is a great opportunity and it's an opportunity we need to seize. However, the language in the current budget bill is not perfect. There are several provisions in the latest draft that require additional support beams to ensure that the governor's forward-looking objectives are achieved. And we hope that Senator Kaminsky, Assemblyman Engelbreit, and the legislative leaders can work with DEC and the governor's top-notch environmental team to address these issues in the coming weeks so that the final legislative language can assure full that, that the objectives that are set forth are fully achieved. So here are four recommendations and again, we detail them more specifically in our written comments. First, we recommend that the language in the budget bill be modified to clarify the definition of recycling and prevent the chemical industry from using an expanded definition to slip environmentally problematic definitions under the blanket of recycling. And the current wording in the bill opens the door to defining recycling as including thermal processes like gasification and pyrolysis and other chemical processes that could present threats to public health and the environment. The federal legislation that's pending in this area, the federal break free from plastics pollution, offers an alternative definition of recycling that is broader and that covers these kinds of conversion processes like pyrolysis, hydropyrolysis, gasification, and similar technologies that represent the latest efforts by the plastics industry to shoehorn incineration and other chemical and industrial processes into an expanded definition of traditional recycling. So we urge a modification of that definition of recycling to prevent that outcome. Second, the New York State Solid Waste Management Act of 1988 set a solid waste hierarchy. Under this hierarchy, the priorities are first to reduce the amount of solid waste generated, second, to reuse the material for purposes for which it was intended, or to recycle material that can't be reused, and only after that to rely on incineration technologies and landfilling. And so this directive ought to be the fundamental underpinning for all of our solid waste planning and all of our solid waste implementation in New York, including this statute. While the budget bill mentions reduction and reuse as objectives, we believe it doesn't sufficiently elevate these concepts or ensure that they are in fact established as required priorities in the producer responsibility plans that would be adopted. And so we recommend again that the final language here require producers to take affirmative steps to focus first on reduction and reuse. require producers to take affirmative steps to focus first on reduction and reuse. And we set forth a number of objectives, why? And how that could happen and point to legislation in California, Washington State, New Jersey. And again, the federal bill, all of which have language that we believe could be inserted into this bill to achieve that objective. The bottom line is that New York's EPR legislation should include sensible, realistic reduction, reuse, recycled content, numerical targets and dates for producers to meet so that they're taking action to achieve the state solid waste hierarchy. Two final points. The administration's budget bill rightly recognizes that not every single detail of the extended producer responsibility scheme can be set forth with precision in the legislation itself. And to assist in developing many of the specific details, it envisions the creation of advisory of an advisory committee to help shape the program as well as the creation of one or more producer responsibility organizations to ensure implementation. While we support the inclusion of both of these elements, we believe that the powers and responsibilities given to these unelected, non governmental bodies are too broad and could be dominated by, to an unreasonable degree, by industry representatives without sufficient government oversight. So we recommend that the final language in the legislation place more responsibilities in the hands of the Department of Environmental Conservation and that there be public rulemaking proposals that would enable all members of the public to comment on draft plans. Finally, I'll just mention that the governor's bill, to its credit, includes limitations on toxics in packaging and recognizes the potential threat that the presence of chemicals in packaging raise. But in our view, this language needs to be expanded so that it covers a full array of chemicals, not just the handful of chemicals identified in the legislation. Let me conclude by saying that despite the suggestions that we have raised, which we feel are critical to making this a strong bill, we believe that final legislation advancing the EPR concept can and must be advanced as part of this year's budget. Objecting, complaining, that is not enough. This is our window of opportunity. Senator Kaminsky has jump started what can be a transformative process. Governor Huckle has moved the ball down the field. Now we all need to roll up our sleeves and work together in the budget process to seize this opportunity to help New York State become a true national leader in sustainability in the solid waste area. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Eric. Appreciate it. L'Oreal, the next speaker.
Our next guest is Judith Enk from Beyond Plastics.
Hi, everyone. I'm Judith Enk with Beyond Plastics and former EPA Regional Administrator. It's great to follow Eric Goldstein and N R D C. I agree with all four of his policy recommendations. I do want to say, though, that the governor's budget bill, which, if it is included in the budget, would be adopted by April one, is a good try, but needs a tremendous amount of work in revision. And Beyond Plastics stands ready to work with the SWABs, the legislature, the governor, the D E C to make some really vital changes. First up, it is time to update the New York Bottle Bill. This year is our fortieth anniversary of the Bottle Bill. We should have had a cake. There are two things that matter most. One is increasing the deposit to a dime that will double the income for many redeemers. You're going to hear today from Yes We Can, they play a vital service. And secondly, it makes no sense at all that this bottle has a nickel or dime deposit on it and this bottle doesn't. Simply because this one makes you burp, it's carbonated. This one hopefully doesn't make you burp. So let's update the bottle this year. It's a great example of EPR. Second, the governor's program bill, as drafted, would allow for some thermal treatment of waste as long as it produces a product to some degree. That opens the door for so called chemical recycling, which the plastics industry is pushing hard and which we need to close the door on entirely. Third, I support the creation of a new category in the Environmental Bond Act, which voters may be voting on this November, to provide much needed funding to build new infrastructure for waste reduction, reuse and refill. Because of concerns about different EPR bills that have been introduced, myself and a number of environmental groups met over the summer and drafted a model EPR bill, which I invite all of you to take a look at. A key part of our model bill deals with the producer responsibility. We have organization. We have to get these details right. And I want to, I want to walk you through a scenario. Imagine the state legislature is working hard to address the climate change crisis. Imagine that they adopt a law that has no clear goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Under the scenario, companies like Exxon Mobil and Shell are directed to establish their own, let's call it a polluter responsibility organization, a P R O. And Shell and Exxon Mobil are directed to write their own plans on how to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The plan does not have to include clear binding requirements to reduce greenhouse gases. And imagine Exxon Mobil has the discretion not to either do their own plan or to team up with their competitors to do their own P R O. I don't think that is likely to happen. Once the the plan is written, it's then reviewed by an advisory committee. And in Governor Hokel's bill, the advisory committee has a majority of seats that are parties that represent the waste industry or the packaging industry. Just one seat for environmental justice, eat for environmental, one seat for consumer. The majority of the people on this very powerful unelected advisory committee represent companies that helped create the problem. These plans are submitted to an understaffed, overextended D E C, which has only ninety days to review and sign off. And it's the polluters themselves who address how they're going to reduce greenhouse gases, which with no clear requirements for reduction in the law. And they will decide how much each polluter will pay into a new fund to address the problem. This is a clear example of self regulation. It won't work. And unfortunately, if a system like this is set up, it'll take years to reach the logical conclusion that it doesn't work. Now, we would never do that in New York on greenhouse gases and climate change. In fact, the legislature and the governor adopted a bill on climate change to require eighty-five percent reduction in greenhouse gases. Yet this is precisely how Governor Hokel's budget bill on extended producer responsibility for packaging envisions how an EPR program will work. It is very much producer controlled. Instead, we need a law that requires reduction in packaging by every company, a specific number. Second, recycled content were easy to recycle for consumers requirements. You don't leave that to the producer. The role of the legislature is to put that in the statute. We have to have a bill that reduces toxics in packaging. The governor has introduced an accompanying bill that deals with phthalates and PFAS chemicals. Very important, but that is not the whole universe. I don't want formaldehyde in my consumer packaging and I doubt you do too. Take a look at our list of some of the most toxic materials that we would prohibit in our model bill. There needs to be a needs assessment. We agree on that. The needs assessment will then define what are the waste reduction and recycling programs that are funded at the local level. I want to emphasize that the history of EPR proposals in this country have focused on the important goal of funding of local recycling programs. But we cannot recycle our way out of the plastic pollution crisis. And as Eric pointed out, waste reduction, reuse, refill is higher on the hierarchy and yet gets virtually no funding and very little attention. We think that this program is going to involve a lot of money. The D E C is going to need more staff. And also, we need to establish an Office of Inspector General to make sure when there is non compliance, there is an added cop on the beat to make sure that companies comply with the law. It's going to be challenging, in particular with importers. We also support a citizen suit provision. People won't be suing the D E C. They could sue companies that are ignoring the law or not complying. We also need to increase the fines for non compliance. I think the role of a producer responsibility organization should be quite simple. It should act almost as an accounting firm. They collect the fees. They write checks for eligible projects that are identified in the in the statewide needs assessment. They collect and compile data. They make that publicly available and they provide technical assistance to businesses that want to comply with the law. That is vastly different than the role of the P R O that's contemplated in the governor's bill. The governor's bill puts packaging producers essentially in the driver's seat on whether or not this law is going to work. We would not expect Exxon Mobil, Shell and others to be responsible for reducing greenhouse gas emissions. They haven't for decades. They only will when there's a legislative requirement making them do that. So kicking the can down the road and saying at some point a P R O might get to reduction and D E C might require reduction is not good enough. The stakes are very, very high. A report came out by the National Academy of Science on December first documenting that eight million metric tons of plastic enter our ocean every year. Plastic, plastic is being manufactured in environmental justice communities in Texas and Louisiana. And if we don't get waste reduction and recycling right in this statute, it means more plastic and other waste going to garbage incinerators and landfills that are almost always cited in low income in communities and communities of color. So our overriding commitment here should be equity and environmental justice. And while I very much appreciate the governor introducing a bill, it really needs a lot of work to get us where we need to be. I encourage the SWABs and members of the public to watch this very closely. We've got lots of good information on the Beyond Plastics website. Happy to share our model bill. We also have a handy chart that I submitted as part of my testimony, which compares the governor's bill with our model bill. We can do better. This is not a criticism of the governor or the D E C or the legislature. It's just my informed judgment. Looking at this issue for decades, we have to get the details right. And the current bill unfortunately doesn't quite get us there. Thank you.
Judith, thank you very much. I really appreciate the testimony. And L'Oreal, can we call the the next speaker, please?
Yes, the next guest is Christine Kubat, Executive Director, Recycle Hawaii. Aloha.
Aloha. Yep, that's the way we do it here. So first, I want to create a context for what I'm about to say so you understand why somebody from Hawaii feels like it's necessary to come and have her voice heard here. Human wastefulness is destroying the natural systems that support all life on the planet. We find plastic pollution in the deepest parts of the ocean, the highest mountains on the land. It's in the air we breathe, the water we drink, the salt we consume and the amniotic sacs where human life begins. I'm here before you as a mother and a grandmother sharing what I know about this issue after spending countless hours researching it and acting on what I have learned. I want to be acknowledged as an ordinary person who cares in an extraordinary way. And in turn, I want to acknowledge the folks at the Institute for Local Self Reliance who consistently elevate the voices of people like me so we can be heard in policy arenas like this one. As for sharing what I've learned, I want to address two trends germane to the discussion we are having today that are having an inordinate amount of influence in EPR policy arenas and are equally disempowering to the people who most need to be heard. The first relates to certain producers that favor P R Os, producer responsibility organizations. I need to be clear that not all producers support P R Os. The work I do in Hawaii, I've been engaging with a lot of them lately at the highest levels. People who worked for Unilever, Mars, Denon, Nestle. Yeah, there's, there's some support for P R Os, but it's very conditional. And when we add that to the testimony we just heard, we really have to consider P R Os and the role that they would play. But among the producers who do support this P R O model, I've observed an attitude that prefers the system because though, even though EPR is supposed to be the means for producers to take responsibility, it's actually the most efficient way for them to wash their hands of the whole issue and pass costs on to consumers. Washing your hands is not taking responsibility. Second relates to environmental organizations that last on to the idea of EPR early on. You could think of them as early adopters. And it just puzzles me after listening to the two testimonies previous to mine that people who see these huge concerns and serious problems with this type of legislation would still testify in favor of it. I just makes no sense to me. It goes along with the idea that you need ninety pages of legislation to make this happen. That right there is enough to tell you that passing a bill like this comes with serious risks and I don't believe it's necessary to take them at all. So the most important thing when we're going to look at who's going to accept responsibility, who's going to ascertain where that responsibility lies, is we need to create a distinction between what happens upstream and what happens downstream in the waste making cycle. Whatever happens upstream, clearly that's the responsibility of the producers. And there's no need to have a P R O to get the producers to accept responsibility upstream. Again, the two testifiers before me really emphasized reducing the volume of packaging, not using toxic materials. You don't need a producer responsibility organization to make that happen. New York can pass legislation. They can support the national movement to, you know, create these changes. You don't have to tie that to what's going to happen downstream to have effective EPR policy. So then when we look at downstream, whose responsibility is it there? It's not fair to put the responsibility of everything that happens downstream on the producers because you have consumers and you have municipalities that are well funded by taxpayers to handle those materials. So it's premature to jump in and create this whole new downstream landscape because you want to address the problem of waste. You need to create time for these producers to make the changes, make the upstream innovations that they need to make and go ahead, go for it, be strong, be stringent there. But you have to give time for those innovations to kick in before you step in and start seeing what's going to happen downstream. I know enough about waste to know that once the materials coming off the back end are compostable, recyclable or reusable, municipalities throughout the nation are going to be able to handle those materials. The most important part of letting them handle those materials is that they are the ones that are closest to the communities that need those resources to build wealth. This is about so much more than creating waste. This is about the way resources are extracted. This is a way about, this is about how poverty is created in communities where people don't have resources. Opening the door to these Opening the door to these PROs. And again, remember everything that Judith and Eric just said about all the concerns, about all the ways this could go wrong. Think to yourself, why do you need 90 pages of legislation to make sure that all those things don't go wrong? And even then, you're not going to have it covered. It's because the idea is not sound. So again, stick with what's happening upstream. Make sure, hold the producers accountable there. But when it comes to downstream, you need to allow the communities that are in the the most need to have access to these resources to use them to build the circular economy. Everyone's talking about circular economy. Nine times out of 10, where that circle breaks down, it's a trash can, it's a dumpster, it's a landfill, it's an incinerator, it's a chemical recycling plant. That it's breaking down there, the circle is breaking down there. When you add in the amount of energy that it takes and the total waste profile of these different schemes. So you have to create a new system downstream, but it shouldn't be dominated by producers who are really thrilled to create this whole new level of bureaucracy or industry that allows them to wipe their hands and just shift the costs of the whole system onto consumers. So I really encourage you to keep at it with EPR, but don't do anything to further this system, which is going to undermine our long-term goals. And that is to be less wasteful and to treat the things that we don't want anymore as resources to preserve their value in the best possible way and to get them into the hands of the people who most need resources to build wealth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Christine. L'Oreal, our next speaker, please.
We have Sarah Blumquist, Director, Governmental Affairs, Tomra.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you all for having me here today. As mentioned, my name's Sarah Blumquist. I'm the Director of Government Affairs at Tomra, focusing on recycling in the circular economy. I also used to be the Chair of the Brooklyn Swab and I know most of you and I'm friends with a lot of you as well. So a big thanks to the swabs for putting this on, especially Rhonda, Oliver and Matt especially. I think it's great that you guys were able to put this together so quickly and get so many people involved. So happy to be here today. I'm basically going to read from the testimony I submitted yesterday, but try to emphasize a few of the key points as well that we're making. So you may be familiar with Tomra or you may not, but we're active on the collection side of recycling. So that means reverse vending machines. If you take your bottle to get your deposit, your deposit container to get the money back, for instance, at Wegmans in, I think it's downtown Brooklyn area, Fort Greene. Those machines there, those are Tomra machines that are scanning that bottle and giving you your money back. We also make all types of optical and sensor-based sorting equipment at Sims, the recycling facility in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, where Tom spoke is from. I think there's at least a dozen of our units that are sorting all the curbside material from New York and making that into commodities that are then sold. So that explains a little bit about our kind of experience and background why we're here today. Originally founded in Norway, we've been in the business for over 50 years designing holistic resource systems. And in New York specifically, we were involved throughout the value chain and the deposit system. We in general support this bill for EPR, but definitely have several critical amendments that we'd like to see change. First and foremost, the reporting requirement that's been mentioned probably a few times now for beverage containers. I think everyone kind of is interpreting it in different ways, but that right there, I think speaks volumes that it needs to be, at the very least clarified, if not completely removed, because I think it does make the bottle deposit system, the bottle bill, very vulnerable to being dismantled. We see deposit systems as being the highest performing systems for redeeming and recycling beverage containers. Whether you're comparing it to general curbside or curbside with EPR, a deposit system for beverage containers reaches rates in the bare minimum of 60, but upwards of 70, 80, 90% in certain markets. And we don't see anything even half of that through curbside. So for sure, we'd like to see beverage containers all included in the bottle deposit system, not in EPR. Let's see, some of the other core points. Targets, so targets, again, I think a lot of us have kind of similar things that are core to us and maybe just focusing on different aspects of it. But the targets, I appreciate that it specified three different target categories. It's got recycling recovery, which sounds to be pretty much like collection, as well as recycled content, specifically post-consumer recycled content, which is essential. So although it's great to have those three categories, and they also say that they will be by material type, which is not yet defined. We do recommend or hope that those would be set in statute, as I believe Eric from NRD C also mentioned. Putting them in the PRO plan just doesn't seem as an effective way to reach the goals that we're all hoping to achieve with EPR. And sorry if you hear my cat meowing. So again, the targets are critical. Having those three categories is great. Recycled content, especially, you know, at the end of the day, we're recycling so we can put this material back into new products. So we'd like to see those in statute. The topic of definitions, again, I think Eric and maybe some other folks have mentioned this, but clarifying, really strengthening the definitions. And specifically, I want to call out recycling and recycling rate. Recycling, I can read specifically, recycling, it says recycling does not include thermal treatment processes that produce fuel or fuel products without substantial production of a marketable non-fuel product or secondary raw material. I think at the very least, substantial needs to be defined and clarified. Yeah, I don't think there's too much more for me to say there, but that really leaves it open to interpretation. And if it is going to be allowed in some tiny, tiny portion, we need to understand why it's needed and it shouldn't be another option for recycling. That's equivalent to mechanical recycling, for instance. The other definition that is critical, recycling rate. As, as the way it's currently read, I think it's unclear where in the value chain the recycling will be measured. And to get accurate data and make sure we're doing true recycling, we want to make sure that recycling's being measured. The final input to recycling is what's being measured, not the input to the MRF. We don't want contamination, residue, labels, inks, those shouldn't be counted towards recycling. And we can look to the EU as an example here. They're currently going through revisions so that the material that enters for final recycling is what's counted towards recycling. What that also does is kind of level sets the playing field and brings harmonization. So everyone's comparing the same type of performance. Two more critical amendments that we have that are kind of contingent for support. The other one, so the needs assessment, which folks have mentioned, of course, this is a critical, a very important aspect of this bill and very necessary in many ways to know exactly where the gaps are, what's needed. But we also want to see that that needs assessment is also future-looking, that it's not just assessing the current state of affairs and where the gaps are, but for instance, looking at three different scenarios, maybe with different targets and saying, okay, this is the type of investment that's needed to meet these types of targets. So the needs assessment is really tied to investment. So we need to see what are these different scenarios? Where is that investment needed? And along those same lines, I would recommend having a dedicated certain percent, for instance, 5% of funds from the PRO that would be required every year for a set amount of time, maybe five years. Again, it's kind of a leveling of the playing field and bringing the baseline up. We constantly get in the chicken or the egg problem in recycling where it's, you know, the tech isn't there, the systems aren't there and is it supply, is it demand? But without investment in the system from the beginning, we're not going to be able to reach those targets. Last but not least, my fifth main point that I had was about access and convenience. Although they do mention access to recycling, I think it's, it could be stronger, basically. The way that I've read it is that access to recycling should be the same as current systems are, but that doesn't bring improvement into the system. I think an ideal would be that access to recycling is as convenient as access to trash. Or, and another option, or at a bare minimum two, there is this provision in there that it says within 15 miles of at least 95% of the population. Again, that's, I think it could be a stronger definition, especially for folks in the city. Maybe it's some type of walking distance metric where it's a maximum half mile walk. But making sure that access and convenience are really strengthened in there. Again, appreciate that they're incorporated, but access to recycling, using drop-offs for certain materials, I think should really be the exception, not the rule. So I will wrap up now. To reiterate, I'm just going to read from here that Title 33 has some excellent components that we see around the globe in high-performing EPR systems. For example, a requirement for targets on recovery, recycling and recycled content. However, as I previously outlined, there are several critical areas that must be revised in order to align with those high-performing systems, including protecting the bottle bill, setting targets in statute, strengthening the definitions for recycling and recycling rate, setting investment thresholds with a focus on equality systems, and finally, improving recycling access so that it's widespread and convenient for all the arkers. Thank you all for your time and for putting all your minds together to solve this problem. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Sarah. And L'Oreal, next speaker.
We welcome Dawn Tim, Chair of New York Product Stewardship Council.
Hi there. Thank you for the opportunity again, Dawn Tim. I'm the Chair of the New York Product Stewardship Council. And I also serve at the Western New York Community as the Director of Environmental and Solid Waste for Niagara County. A little bit about the PSC. Since 2009, we've led a growing coalition of public, private and nonprofit organizations in our effort to transform New York's solid waste management system, one that is a taxpayer-dependent model to one that is based on product stewardship. This is a system that reduces public costs, incentivizes product design changes and drives economic and job growth. The PSC has played a central role in development of New York's five product stewardship laws, electronics, mercury thermostats, rechargeable batteries, pharmaceuticals and paint. And also, we are looking to continue the success as it relates to packaging and printed paper EPR. It goes without saying, but thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you today. Specifically, I would like to take a moment to just address the benefits of the packaging EPR perspective for local governments. Regardless of your geographic position, again, your location versus mine expand the entire Route 90 of New York State. Many local governments and service providers are struggling to provide consistent recycling services to residents. Engaging producers of packaging and printed paper is an essential step in correcting the many issues that plague recycling services in New York. I think arguably, we could say that recycling is one of our state's greatest collective efforts. And we also can state that recycling is broken. Local governments have been riding a very turbulent tide of changing commodity market values, labor and supply chain shortages, the lack of legislation to stimulate recovery, recycling and reuse. And I know I'm kicking a dead horse when I say that pandemic-related issues as far as available funds and resources are also scarce. All the while that we're managing a plethora of packaging types, we have confusing education regarding recyclability. And we even further experiencing more pandemic-related impacts to the waste stream, such as the introduction of packaging that may be recyclable, what most likely is not, and also becomes a contaminant. As governments are navigating the state of our recycling operations, we are in no position to invest in our recycling infrastructure and advance opportunities to our underserved areas. Collectively, all of these challenges are underscoring the deficiencies in our statewide recycling infrastructure, which is in dire need of investment and modernization. Governor Hochul's budget proposal engages consumers and engages product manufacturers to assume responsibility for their products and their product's end of life. And this incentivizes these manufacturers to reduce packaging, increase packaging's recycled content and make packaging easier to recycle. We anticipate a significant increase in the volume of materials collected that contributes to both green job creation and the entire supply chain associated with it and greenhouse gas emission reductions. We also can benefit from capital investment in an infusion to our system that will modernize recycling and recovery across the state. Under the proposal in Governor Hochul's budget, local governments will have the option to apply for reimbursement and retain control of their local programs. This is especially important because packaging EPR can liberate funding for local governments to make investments elsewhere, reimburse ratepayers and engage manufacturers in the entire system from education to product creation. Like many of the folks that have mentioned improvements required today, the New York Product Stewardship Council agrees that some of the changes are required. And I'll briefly state five of them. The first, inclusion of a statewide convenience standard. Secondly, inclusion of the list of statewide list of acceptable recyclables. Third, inclusion of goals and targets, many have mentioned that as well. We would encourage rethinking activity-based costing. And lastly, clearly define the roles of municipal governments. I'll close by saying, absent of any legislative intervention, the cost of recycling is going to continue to increase. Our recycling rates will not budge and underserved communities will remain underserved. We need to look to ways to reduce expense, expand recycling access. And we have that answer in packaging and printed paper EPR. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you today. Thank you.
Dawn, thank you very much for your testimony. I will now hand over the left-hand seat or the chair to Oliver, right from the Brooklyn Swab for the next hour. And Oliver, you can pick it up from here. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt, and thanks again, Dawn. L'Oreal, are we ready to call our next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Anne Rabe, Environmental Director, NYPD, NiPerg.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity to testify today. I'm the new Environmental Policy Director at the New York State Public Interest Research Group, NiPerg. And I'm going to be addressing the need for, as many others have, the need for a major revision of the governor's extended producer responsibility bill, especially in relation to the necessary inclusion of a bigger, better bottle bill and important amendments that are needed to address this deeply flawed proposal with a misguided advisory committee dominated by the very industry it is supposed to oversee. First, I wanted to give a backdrop on an alarming new report from scientists around the world that was featured in the Environmental Science and Technology Journal this month, last month, January. And it found that the world is beyond the toxic tipping point. Chemical pollution has passed the safe limit for humanity, the scientist stated. The cocktail of chemical pollution that pervades the planet now threatens the stability of global ecosystems upon which humanity depends. Plastics are of particularly high concern, along with 350,000 synthetic chemicals, including pesticides, industrial compounds and antibiotics. The study concluded that chemical pollution has crossed a planetary boundary, the point at which human-made changes to the earth push it outside the stable environment of the last 10,000 years. And Professor Carney at the University of Gothenburg focused on plastics and stated that, for instance, the total mass of plastics now exceeds the total mass of all living mammals. Quite a frightening statement. And then states, this is, this to me is pretty clear indication that we've crossed a boundary. And shifting to a circular economy is really important. That means changing materials and products so they can be reused, not wasted. First, we wanted to speak to the need to include the state's first EPR-based law, the most successful recycling program in our state, the Bottle Deposit Law, established in 1982 and commonly known as the Bottle Bill. And the governor stated in the state address, she said that to combat the state's waste crisis, it would move to an EPR approach to recycling and that she supported the EPR principle and stressed the need for a circular economy. Inexplicably, the governor then failed to include this key EPR-based policy and needed expansion in her proposed executive budget. Basically, over its 40-year history, the Bottle Bill has proven to be highly effective. Basically, over its forty year history, the Bottle Bill has proven to be highly effective program in reducing litter and increasing recycling rates. In two thousand twenty, New York's redemption rate was at sixty-four percent. It is essential that New York addresses its waste issues by including a fully modernized, excuse me. And expanded bottle bill in the EPR proposal, Title thirty-three. It needs to expand the bottle bill to include wine, spirits, hard cider and most non-carbonated beverages. And after forty years, we need to increase the deposit from a nickel to a dime. The state also needs to act swiftly and comprehensively to reduce packaging. Especially plastics with a strong and transparent EPR law. Adopting a weak or ineffectual law will be a huge setback and a waste of time, energy and resources. The governor's bill is not entirely clear, for instance, on how municipal reimbursements would be calculated and provided. So we need to reach out to the governor's office and DEC to answer that question. The producer responsibility organizations of pros, there are significant problems with their structure. And in the current bill. Would we create an unworkable system of self-regulation with minimal regulatory oversight that will take years to ramp up and will not be effective? Wasting precious time that we do not have. We need a strong and effective EPR, which includes targets for packaging reduction. Packaging standards for recycled content and recyclability and a ban on priority toxic chemicals. And again, all beverage containers should be covered under the bigger, better bottle bill that are not covered under the EPR. There should be a separate reduction recycled content requirement in the legislation for beverage containers. In addition, commercial waste should also be addressed. In order to see real reductions in packaging through either elimination or reuse and refill systems, it is critical. To set requirements in the bill and not make them voluntary. The definition of recycling is so inadequate in the bill that it leaves room for waste to fuel or waste to energy schemes to be considered recycling. Which violates the intent of the Environmental Conservation Law's Solid Waste Management Hierarchy Policy, Section twenty-seven oh one oh six. And the EPR bill should also include. Ramp up Toxics and Packaging Act as opposed to having as a separate bill. It should include, for instance, many more chemicals such as orthophthalates, bisphenols. Mercury, cadmium, and the list goes on in my written testimony. And lastly, actually two more things, there is not sufficient oversight or enforcement. To ensure this policy will be adequately enforced in New York City and the rest of the state. Overall, the proposed advisory committee is unworkable, legally suspect. And could result in the foxes guarding the chicken coop. It should be eliminated from the bill. Instead, the governor should look to model advisory oversight committees such as the State Superfund Management Board, which was a balanced and diverse group. Oversaw the implementation of super fund by the Departments of Environmental Conservation and Health. Held public participation sessions at all its quarterly meetings. And issued annual reports with recommendations to improve the program. It was a true oversight advisory committee. And that's what we need in the EPR Title thirty-three. Two other things that are very important that will potentially. Potentially have a very negative impact on the bottle bill. There is one provision in Title thirty-three that directs the PROs, producers. In their annual reports to include an evaluation of feasibility and recommendation for adding beverages in beverage containers. By directing producers to analyze each year whether containers covered under the bottle bill should instead be covered under EPR. The bill puts producers in control of deciding how their packaging should be managed. And gives them a path to relitigate what we already know. Bottle bills are the most effective way to manage beverage containers. Secondly, the definition of packaging and paper products in Title thirty-three is designed to include beverage containers. Not currently covered under the bottle bill into the EPR system. Including in the EPR bill, beverage containers that are not already covered under the bottle bill. Will likely close the door on future bottle bill expansions to these containers. It will also lead to substantial confusion for New York State residents. So in summary, we urge the swabs to work with the environmental community. To ensure that the legislature. Requires major improvements in Title thirty-three. And the expansion of the bigger, better bottle bill and the Toxics and Packaging Act revamped proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Anne, for that clear and strident testimony. Much appreciated. And L'Oreal, who have we got next?
Our next guest is Elizabeth Balkan, Reloop Platform.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having me today. Good afternoon, members of the New York City Solid Waste Advisory Board. My name is Elizabeth Balkan and I am the North America Director for Reloop. An international nonprofit organization that brings together government, non-governmental organizations. And industry players to accelerate the transition to a circular economy. I worked previously for over four years as Policy Director at the New York Department of Sanitation and am a resident of New York City. Today, I'm here to share our concerns about Title thirty-three. The Extended Producer Responsibility Act introduced by New York State Governor Hokel. Rather than echo what has already been said, and despite our broad agreement with the points that have been well made. I will instead bring some of our own analysis into the discussion. The specific provision in question for us is Section twenty-seven dash thirty-three oh nine dot two dot oh. Which calls for an annual evaluation of the feasibility and recommendation for adding beverage containers to the EPR program. Which Anne just highlighted. This applies both to beverage containers currently excluded from the Container Deposit Act, New York State's. Bottle bill, as it's often known, as well as those currently included. We see the potential for this provision to lead to an erosion or full scale dismantling of New York's bottle bill. At Reloop, we believe that sound policy on waste must support the waste hierarchy. Encourage existing best practices and foster innovation. Apply economic instruments when necessary and strive for continuous improvement. As drafted, Article thirty-three goes against more than one of these, at least. More than one of these tenants, which is why Reloop currently has grave concerns and opposes the bill as currently drafted. As I said, I'll walk you through some key data points that support this conclusion and contradict some of the false perceptions that I believe are. Being leveraged to kind of push the bottle bill aside in pursuit of an all encompassing EPR. Intervention. First, the claim is sometimes made that curbside recycling is as effective as. At recycling beverage containers. So in other words, why would you need an EPR, a bottle bill if. If you have improved curbside recycling with EPR. In fact, New York State currently has a seventy-one percent recycling rate. For beverage containers that are covered by the bottle bill. So we remember Judith talking about her Coke bottle, which is, which is covered by the bottle bill. Those types of containers are recycled at around seventy-one percent currently. For containers that are excluded from the bottle bill and here you will remember Judith's iced tea. Those are only recycled at about a twenty percent recycling rate. So the ones that are dependent on curbside recycling only, not part of the bottle bill system. Are reduced at a dramatically lower rate. In other words, for New York State, a beverage container is more than three times likely. To be recycled under the bottle bill than by curbside recycling. Another myth that's often put forward, in fact, this came up in the twenty nineteen proposal to expand the bottle bill. This was offered by New York State city officials and others. And of course, private vendors of New York City. Was that expanding the bottle bill would be bad for recycling. So again, there's this idea that somehow. The bottle bill goes, runs counter to recycling goals and optimal outcomes. Here too, the facts show otherwise. Reloop's analysis finds that an expanded bottle bill with both a higher deposit and a more inclusive scope of containers. Would drive a thirty percent increase overall in beverage container and the beverage container recycling rate. As a result, eighty-nine percent of beverage containers would be recycled versus the current total at fifty-nine percent overall. So again, what we see, and this is substantiated by our analysis, looking at systems all over the world. Is that high performing deposit return systems or bottle bills. Are not only complementary with a robust curbside recycling program, but actually can enhance the effectiveness, cost effectiveness. And environmental performance of curbside recycling programs. Next, New York State Senator Kaminsky and others. Have suggested that EPR could be an effective replacement for the bottle bill. And that the two systems could not be maintained simultaneously. Again, in many jurisdictions all over the world, we see examples where EPR. For PPP and the deposit return system. Do exist simultaneously, side by side, and without any issue. In fact, what we saw in Europe was the beverage brands, the beverage producers. After paying into an EPR system and supporting, being part of the pros, the producer responsibility organizations. In which there were a lot of very. Hard to recycle packaging types that the beverage. Container brands felt that they were subsidizing. Hard to recycle materials and paying more into the system than they ought to be, given how readily recyclable. Aluminum glass and plastic bottles are when separated, when collected in a separate system. So they actually demanded that a DRS be introduced alongside EPR and as a very specialized. Highly tailored program that would optimize the performance of the system. But also, when we look at sort of how these systems sometimes can operate side by side and sort of unintended consequences. From a recycling perspective, we see that. We look at Ontario, which is a Canadian province where two. Systems operate side by side. Some beverage containers are covered by EPR and others are covered by a deposit return system. The difference in outcomes tells the entire story. Beverage containers covered by EPR alone are returned at a rate of forty-six percent. While the return rate for containers covered by the deposit system is nearly eighty percent. So again, it's just an uncomparable in terms of effectiveness. Looking at EPR versus bottle bills. In part because a bottle bill will cover material that's generated in the household, on the go, in businesses. And the EPR proposal as stated would primarily. Cover just residential household material. So as a type of EPR, bottle bills are designed for a specific packaging need and consistently result in optimized performance when compared. With municipal curbside programs, either with or without EPR provisions. Finally, proponents of this bill suggest it will help New York cities and towns get the money they need. To maintain recycling collection programs which have taken a huge hit as a result of the China National Sword policy, the recent economic downturn. And exposure to volatile commodities markets more generally. But here too, our data shows the opposite. Under an aggressive timeline, the needs assessment, stakeholder engagement process and rulemaking for the EPR bill. Will take several years. And New York State will most likely not see a penny in EPR fees before twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven, about five years from now. By contrast, expanding the bottle bill through Title thirty-three could generate desperately needed revenue. As well as municipal budget savings almost immediately and definitely in the next few years. So again, using data from an upcoming study on the impact of bottle bill modernization. Reloop found that managing beverage containers currently costs New York's taxpayers more than a hundred and forty million dollars each year. Roughly one hundred million annually in New York City alone. That's the cost to New York City taxpayers to manage these beverage containers excluded from the bottle bill. Transferring the financial obligation for this packaging to the bottle bill will save New York City. And municipalities across the state significant budget obligations. By Reloop's estimate. And taking into account the full loss of potential revenue to Murfs, like the city's Murfs. Sims, an expanded bottle bill would generate a cost savings, again, once the Murph losses have been factored in. Of more than eight hundred and seventy million dollars over four years statewide and four hundred and forty-nine million dollars for New York City alone. Over this same period, contributions from EPR will be zero dollars. While Reloop as an organization strongly supports EPR. It must be applied in response to specific technical and market failures, leading to suboptimal recycling rates for a specific packaging material. In cases where a product is highly recyclable, enjoys a high market value and demand when collected separately. Is desperately needed by producers to meet minimum content requirements. And commitments and presents a specific problem to the environment like litter. EPR for PPP is a blunt and ineffective tool that will not produce optimal results. Beverage containers meet all of these conditions, which is why a deposit system or bottle bill is the best EPR mechanism to handle them. Using the proposed EPR bill to deal with beverage containers is neither effective nor fiscally responsible policymaking. Our data forcefully dispels the numerous false claims that have been made against the bottle bill and given rise to EPR as a seemingly. Preferable alternative or silver bullet. And our analysis shows that reclassifying beverage containers into the EPR system will erode, not improve beverage container recycling rates. And bottom line, any EPR program that does not address beverage containers with modernized, modernized bottle deposit system. Will not alleviate the financial burden associated with managing beverage containers, materials for at least four years. And will guarantee that more, not fewer beverage containers will end up being burned, buried or littered for many years to come. Thank you for inviting me to speak today and please let me know if I can answer any questions either today or some point in the future.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth, for that insight and analysis. Some great figures there. Just a note quickly on questions, and we haven't specifically set aside time to answer questions in today's. Hearing with it being more of a hearing, so receiving testimony. That said, if any of our. If any of our speakers have questions directed to them in the Q and A that they want to answer. In the, in the Q and A, as in by typing, then please feel free to do so, but it's not something we've specifically set aside. A, an allowance for, if you like. That said, I think we can move on to our next speaker. Who have we got next, L'Oreal?
All right, we have the duo from Sure We Can, Christine Hegel and Ryan Castalia.
Great, thank you so much. My name, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So my name is Christine Hegel and I want to thank the Brooklyn Bronx and Manhattan Swabs for hosting this. Important hearing and for allowing us to testify. Ryan Castalia and I are here today as representatives of Sure We Can, a member based organization in Brooklyn. That works with nearly a thousand canners. Since two thousand twenty-eight, canner members of our organization have dedicated themselves to learning about and debating the merits of EPR systems. Around the world through a series of workshops designed by the Global Alliance of Waste Pickers Subcommittee on EPR. And Ryan is going to put in the chat the recommendations that this global body. Has issued. And the Global Alliance of Waste Pickers represents hundreds of thousands of waste pickers around the world. And our canner members in New York City help develop these recommendations. So I do invite everyone. To, to look at these recommendations. I think they're very important. So in other words, New York canners are stakeholders in this debate. And Ryan and I are here today to share concerns from this community about proposed Title thirty-three. So Title thirty-three finds that the amount of waste generated in New York is a threat to the environment and seeks to require producers to take responsibility. For the development and implementation of strategies to promote. Reduction, reuse, recovery and recycling. As a nonprofit, community based redemption and sustainability center, we certainly share these concerns about environmental threat and the need for EPR. Although a federal bill that includes a national bottle bill system is far more ideal. EPR policies at the state level do have the potential to accomplish these goals. But we're deeply concerned that Title thirty-three in its current form is not the vehicle to build a more circular economy and. Many people speaking here today certainly concur with this. So, oh, sorry, I've lost my. Hold on, let me get out of my. There we go. So, we're, as we all know, the devil is in the details. We want to outline three of our concerns about Title thirty-three today. So firstly, Title thirty-three requires the establishment of a producer responsibility organization, as others have mentioned. Representing the largest multinational corporations. This creates corporate controlled EPR and means that producers will have power over the very municipalities trying to hold them accountable. For the waste they produce. The PRO, according to this plan, is charged with overseeing a needs assessment process. And then developing and managing the downstream recovery and processing of materials. And as Neil Seldman, as part of his Waste to Wealth Initiative, has noted, I know he's going to be speaking next or coming up soon, PRO-controlled EPR takes democratic decision-making power away from cities and the organized citizens, small businesses, and other local entities that have led the recycling movement for fifty years. All of these are sources of expertise and have a stake in community, unlike multinational producers. So neither would the the power of this PRO be constrained by the Advisory Board. The articles in Title Thirty Three pertaining to the composition and purview of the Advisory Board clearly limit their power vis a vis the PRO. There is no process for identifying, training, and empowering a diverse set of stakeholders who can truly enact democratic procedures to hold the PRO accountable. Advisory Board members importantly would be unpaid, according to what's in the bill now. Unlike those, they will be charged with keeping in check, who will be legal experts paid by the PRO to guard their interests. There are very few seats allowed allocated to community members who in any case would be sidelined by the quote-unquote experts in the room. And this sets up a David and Goliath dynamic that will not, I assure you, give any half to Advisory Board recommendations to, for instance, prioritize fair opportunity distribution, increase minimum recovery rates, and so forth. EPR should be government-led because governments are accountable to their constituents and not producer-led. By law, producers are accountable to their shareholders, not to community members. And as such, a PR-led system is by design one that must increase the bottom line for corporate shareholders. This will impact the targets they set for themselves and the enforcement of such targets. This also sets up a clear pathway for producers to increase profits through their management of the downstream materials recovery process. Is this really what we want? A system that purports to improve resource recovery at the expense of producers that actually creates an income stream for them? I don't think so. Secondly, Title Thirty Three is problematic because unlike the latest version of Hawaii's EPR proposed legislation, it focuses overly on downstream responsibilities of the PRO to design and manage a centralized EPR system for post-consumer recovery, rather than focusing on upstream responsibilities to reduce the amount of packaging and redesign packaging and containerization for recyclability. An upstream focus emphasizes waste reduction at the site of production, which is what any EPR bill should ultimately accomplish. And as Christine Kubat, who spoke a while ago, points out in a recent article, quote, "Producers alone control how their products are made and packaged, and their business models have always included budgets that fund those choices," end quote. "Let's use EPR to finally force producers to make changes that will, in the long run, increase the value of recovered materials." This, as Kubat points out, will bring down the cost of handling these materials downstream because there will be less to recover and materials will be easier to reuse, repair, and recycle. There's very little attention to packaging and product redesign in the New York State proposal beyond some discussion of eco-modulation, special assessments on hard-to-recycle materials. We concur with Kubat's proposal for a transitional EPR model. In her words, quote, "Producers should not be expected to pay for downstream operations in perpetuity. What we should expect instead is a willingness for them to reimburse municipalities for the costs associated with transitioning to a world in which products and packaging are readily repaired, reused, or recycled." New York State should move in this direction in order to be a national leader on waste reduction and recovery. And now I'll hand it over to Ryan.
Thanks so much, Christine. Our third point is that Title Thirty Three introduces potentially negative implications for our highly effective New York State bottle bill. And this has been reiterated also by others here in the hearing today. We're especially concerned over language in Title Thirty Three that hints at the New York State bottle bill being subsumed under this new PR-oriented model. The opposite idea should be promoted. The deposit refund system created by the bottle bill can be used as a model for broader and more expansive programs that achieve important outcomes of job creation, provision of income to the profoundly underserved, and create a context for deeper public participation in recycling. Like other bottle bills in the United States and across the world, New York has led to waste diversion rates for the materials it covers that surpass by far, just like Elizabeth Balkan just explained to us, most municipal recycling systems. In New York, work done under the bottle bill reduces street litter by just over seventy percent, and in twenty twenty helped recycle five and a half billion bottles and cans, over two hundred thousand tons of waste, at no cost to local governments. The state even earns income from deposits that go unredemed. Redemption Centers in New York City and Long Island alone support at least five thousand employees. And at Sure We Can, in twenty nineteen, we diverted over twelve million containers that would have otherwise gone to the landfill. And this number increases every year. As an organization, we're particularly focused on advocating for canners, many of whom are desperately in need of low-barrier sources of income like container redemption. But in fact, our larger aim is to ensure that all New Yorkers are incentivized to participate in recycling. It not only makes environmental sense, but also makes economic sense. But there's no reason why EPR cannot also be a policy that creates work and economic and environmental justice for residents living in poverty and willing to do street-level sorting and hauling to recover these valuable materials. Bottle deposits work because they empower normal people to engage directly with sustainability and recognize the real value for themselves and for society of materials and the act of recycling. As Judith Thang rightly pointed out earlier, the bottle bill is an extant and effective example of EPR. We've heard arguments that the bottle bill expansion is a distraction from pursuing holistic EPR in New York State, and we feel this couldn't be further from the truth. The bottle bill is EPR, and it works. Rather than shifting direction to create new and unwieldy systems that cede oversight and control to profit-motivated producers over the state and the people it represents, we should expand the scope of what's already working and reap the rewards of higher recycling rates, greater community participation recycling, and greater community benefit in the form of less litter and more income for underserved people. The narrative of distinction between the bottle bill and EPR is one that creates confusion on all sides and only benefits those who stand to gain from a system that's more obscure, more exclusive, and more expensive. We should not give up these gains in a new EPR bill that prioritizes producers over consumers. We should in fact be expanding the deposit refund system that has helped us edge closer to diversion rates in states without bottle bills. In conclusion, New York State is definitely overdue for a packaging and paper EPR plan. Title Thirty Three needs a lot of work to truly work for our state or for New York City. Waste is a valuable resource, and producers know it. If we put control of this system in their hands with very weak accountability structures, as this bill aims to do, they'll continue to prioritize market interests over long-term environmental interests. We want EPR that reduces waste, holds producers financially accountable, and truly benefits our communities. Again, we represent Sure We Can and Community-Based Redemption and Recycling, and we thank you so much for putting together this important and public hearing. Thank you.
And Christine, a very big thank you for that important testimony. Right, who have we got next, L'Oreal?
Our next guest is Neil Seldman, Institute for Local Self-Reliance, ILSR.
Hi, everybody. And again, I have to add my thanks to the Swabs for conducting this. It is a very stimulating conversation. I've worked with the Swabs for years. We repost their zero-waste analysis and insight. And quite frankly, I consider this hearing a a another version and an improved one to the one that the institute had on this subject a couple of months ago. So thanks to Matt, Maggie, and Rhonda, and of course, others who I haven't met yet that are behind all of your swabs. I appreciate it. And of course, I do, I understand, as it was explained, that there'll be no dialogue, just presentations, I understand, and this is not a complaint, but it's a request that there be a follow-up because I think it would be terrific to have a dialogue with the articulate folks who've been presenting so far. And in fact, because they presented so well, I may be able to cut things short. But I agree with the last few speakers. PROs are, I would say, dangerous organizations because of the concentration of power, as people mentioned. And if if they get control, there would be stagnation, including, let's just look at the the discussion of glass, bottle bill glasses clean. Processed glass through a mixed waste or even dual-stream system is is not as clean. And for big single-stream systems, the glass isn't even good enough for industry, and therefore goes to landfills in one form or another. So by giving control to the largest corporations, we're actually downgrading, as has been explained. And in fact, no other industry is taxed and is given the right to tax themselves and spend the money the way they see fit. So we have been the country, because we're in these crises that have plastic and warming crises that have been mentioned, where the the public has been subject to a lobbying campaign that a very well-financed one by the packaging industry and the incineration industry that overwhelms our industries. And in fact, it has overwhelmed these, many of the groups that have signed on to support EPR bills. As I have said in other occasions, the support is widespread but very shallow because it's so hard to understand. And this leads me to my conclusion that is twofold about why establishing a PRO is a dangerous thing, other than that it's unnecessary. And I'm clued into this insight perhaps by Einstein, who said, "A smart person avoids a problem, a genius, excuse me, boy, a smart person solves a problem, a genius avoids a problem." And the PROs are things you want to avoid. They remind me of the Office of Circumlocution that Dickens invented in his imagination, hundred and seventy-five years ago, a bureaucracy that's dedicated to to stagnation, the science of disinformation and obfuscation, as has been mentioned. And that's what these are, the the categories, the the rulemaking, that four or five years it takes to put this together. It's a monstrosity that cannot be controlled. And therefore, there's no reason for it. The second is that these PROs, as they have been exhibited in British Columbia, are very dangerous. They're top-down command Soviet-type, five-year plans. They don't need prices, so they could just dictate terms. They they're undermining the bottle bill. It is, the bottle bills are precious, as we've heard, and therefore these agencies have been, the PRO concept has been called by some of our well-known friends, a parasitic, middle-level agency, a hostile takeover, and that, when it comes to the bottle bills, it literally is a a money grab for the unredeemed deposits. We've seen what happened in Connecticut. I don't know how many years, but it's been at least, perhaps, I'm sorry, about twenty years that New York City, excuse me, New York State has taken back its unredeemed deposits. It would be crazy to give them back to these large-scale, very rich industries. The the problem is plastic. Don't don't bother glass. We know how to recycle. We're at thirty-five percent. It could be ninety if the industry could provide clean glass. Metal and plastic are soaring. Plastic is is a laggard, a very big laggard. Tax it. California, Texas are planning on taxing it. The Federal Reduce Act puts a a nice percentage surcharge on virgin plastic. Go after plastic. Don't waste your time with these, this rigmarole of of regulation and control and control at that by the corporations who are most responsible. And corporations that have that have been really terrible, not just responsible, look at the oil and plastic industry over the last fifty years, what they've done. And still, they're not admitting it, and still, they are planning on more and more incineration of plastic. So and that's one of the conclusions from British Columbia. They need incinerators, and they're expanding that. So if EPR can help us get to zero waste, let's use it as we do for hazardous materials and so forth. But the goal is zero waste, not EPR. I will end by pointing out that many of our colleagues across the country, Zero Waste USA, Sierra Club, Gaia, have pointed out that we need reimbursement. We don't need the PROs. We need to support our government. I suggest we tax what we don't want. We invest in what we want. We ban what's dangerous, and we support the champions of zero waste in our legislatures and agencies by voting and buying the right products from industry. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Neil. Always great to get your insight. L'Oreal, who do we have up next?
Our next presenter is Maurice Sampson from Clean Water Action.
Let's turn on some lights. There we go. Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to participate here today. My name is Maurice Sampson. I am currently the Eastern Pennsylvania Director for Clean Water Action, based here in Philadelphia. And my former wife, I was the first recycling coordinator with the city of Newark, New Jersey, and then Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. And I am a longtime associate and co-conspirator with Neil Seldman. I want to say from the outset that I think this bill is full of good ideas with a fatal flaw called the Producer Responsibility Organization, which I feel is unnecessary and ultimately, for lots of reasons spoken today, counterproductive. Title Thirty Three, Extended Producer Responsibility Act, will require packaging and paper product producers to take responsibility for development and implementation of strategies to promote reduction, recycling, recovery of recovered materials and products through investments of in-product life management, a printed packaging paper. It will accomplish this by calling on producers to form a not-for-profit organization that represents a diversity of producers and covered materials and product types as an agent on behalf of all producers to finance a program that will manage all New York State's waste and recycling collection. Will also be a governing board representing diversity of producers and materials with voting, non-voting members. Although it is with good intentions, it also calls for a advisory committee that appears to be that appears to leave the responsibility organization as subservient. It has a membership that is so diverse in its makeup and orientation, I have serious doubts and perhaps even a sense of relief that the thing will ever get off the ground, should it be passed. Offer no suggestions for how this might be revised. I think it should be eliminated. I think that Title Thirty Three attempts to put everything under one umbrella. And it's a chainsaw that will clearcut so much of the progress that we have made over the years in dealing with waste. We need to carve it out. What we need is a scalpel. We need to carve out and leave the bottle bill alone. It's not broken. Don't fix it. There are a minimum of good parts of this bill that need to be carved out and developed on their own. Minimum content provisions, provisions for reuse. And I'm sure there are quite of other items here that can also be pulled out. You know, in North America, there are five thousand product manufacturers. There are one hundred companies that are responsible for ninety percent of all the waste. There are twenty companies that are responsible for half of all the litter. I really suspect it's those last twenty companies that will end up being the ones who will be the Producer Responsibility Organization. You know, I think the thought that we can take the people who make pollution and put them in charge of not taking pollution is somewhat delusional. I have to tell the story once again of the scorpion and the frog. If you've heard this story before, which you remember, is that the scorpion and frog are on the bank, and scorpion says to the frog, "Let me climb on your back and go across the across the river." And the scorpion and the frog says, "Wait a minute. You get on my back, you'll sting me, and I'll die." Scorpion says, "Let's think about this for a minute. If I'm on your back in the middle of the stream, I sting you, we're both going to drown." Frog thought about it for a minute, says, "Get on." Halfway across the stream, scorpion stings the frog. Frog says, "I don't understand. Why'd you do that? We're both going to die." And the scorpion says, "I don't know. I guess it's just in my nature." I think that we need to know that the companies that manufacture products are doing so to manufacture products in order to make the profit that they can make. To think that we are sub- To think that we are suddenly going to get these people to start thinking about trash, thinking about recycling by putting them in charge. I just think it's ill advised and ludicrous. If what we want to do is to to make to reach this goal and what we want to do is to pay for what it costs, then let's tax them. Let's tax them and pay for what it costs. Let's make the production of products that are not recyclable so expensive that the best option is to make them so they are reusable or recyclable. That feeds what we're trying to do as opposed as to working against us. Let's invest in those companies that want to make these things happen, that want to drive the recycling. Let's also look for champions among our elected officials who believe in zero waste, who want to work towards that. And let's get together to make our efforts towards baking this build up and to not build down. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maurice, for that. L'Oreal, who do we have up next?
Our next speaker is Debbie Lee Cohen from Cafeteria Culture.
Thanks, Maurice, and thank you, Neil. Hard acts to follow, really inspirational. I just want to say a huge thank you to the Solid Waste Advisory Board of Brooklyn, Bronx, Manhattan, and Queens. Full disclosure, I am a member of the Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board, honored to be. And I'm also thrilled to hear others testify about extended producer responsibilities today. I'm Debbie Lee Cohen. I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Cafeteria Culture. I'm the co-director-producer of the movie Microplastic Madness, a eleven year old point of view of the plastic pollution problem. I'm also a parent and a stage four cancer patient, very much concerned about health and plastics on a personal level. For over a decade, Cafeteria Culture has been teaching innovative interdisciplinary zero waste climate education in New York City public schools. The students in our programs learn about plastic pollution, zero waste, environmental justice, mostly through place-based education. And we work in partnership with the New York City Department of Education with students, teachers, staff, and also the directors of school food and sustainability, conducting detailed cafeteria waste audits. And our students, who also participate in street and beach litter surveys, they regularly are provided opportunities to present their data, both quantitative and qualitative, and with their stories to key policymakers. And now we're learning from some of our program alumni, young adults, who continue to participate in this meaningful civic engagement in the democratic process. I'm sorry that I am testifying today and not them. I would really love for this to be one of our students, but that didn't work out today. Hopefully, next time. While we really appreciate the dedication and effort of policymakers and the governor for Title thirty three and any PR legislation, we cannot support the budget bill as it is currently drafted, specifically with regard to the structure of the producer responsibility organizations, as well as a need for the clarification of the term recycling, a lack of incentivization to prioritize, reduce, and reuse systems, and also the issues around chemicals that they should be reduced from plastic packaging. The public engagement process is critical for the successful enactment of an equitable state EPR law. Given the large amount of plastics that flow from school cafeterias, and if you haven't been in a school cafeteria lately, I'll just clue you in, it's worse than ever. There's more plastic now due to the pandemic, more plastic, single use plastic packaging than ever. Our Cafeteria Culture team can envision that a well crafted New York EPR legislation law could be a game changer, and it could actually result in in reducing school food service plastic packaging. However, we do not see reduction or transformation of the plastic packaging end of life scenario with corporate self-regulated EPR. We strongly believe that the role of the producer should be financial remuneration only in trusting a solution to our waste crisis. To those who created it, the polluters who have consistently placed profit over the health of our children and vulnerable communities is a very dangerous proposition. And we have no time to waste. The urgency of our now seemingly unsolvable single use plastic pollution crisis is being driven by the industry that profits from the extraction of fossil fuels. They've already proven that they have an unacceptable disregard for the protection of ecosystems, human health, and our children's most basic right to a safe and healthy future. We also urge for the clarification of the definition of recycling, excluding classification and other chemical processes. And we support the definition of recycling as it's used in the Break Fee From Plastic Pollution Act. And we encourage our the the law to reflect that, the state law to reflect the work that's been done on a federal level to draft the Excellent Break Fee From Plastic Pollution Act. We also, what we also like from the BIFPA, the Break Fee From Plastic Pollution Act, is the federal bill's priority on reduction and reuse systems above recycling. This legislation should be an opportunity to incentivize producers to improve the design of their packaging, to eliminate all of the toxic chemicals that we're exposed to via plastic packaging, and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. This requires public control of the system in the interest of environmental and health justice for all of us. Our children deserve an EPR law that includes public control of the system, transparency, accountability, and the removal of any components that can lead to corporate hegemony. Thank you. Oh, I just wanted to add one last thing, that Cafeteria Culture in 2021 interviewed Dr. Lin from Taiwan about the Taiwanese EPR system. We have a link to that on our website. And it revealed that the EPR system in Taiwan offers a stark warning against producer control of the PROs. It took Taiwan nine years to get control back from producers. We don't have nine years. We don't have nine years to get to to bring this legislation into being in the in the form that is now make the same mistake. So let's learn from others' mistakes. There's there's some good examples out there. And let's let's make sure that we take the time to hear from all of the community and that the people who are creating this problem do not continue to control this EPR in New York State. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Debbie Lee, for that testimony. And we are running somewhat ahead of time, so I'm grateful to our speakers for arriving promptly and ready to speak as as soon as they arrive. L'Oreal, who do we have next?
Our next guest speaker is Calvin Lackin from York University.
I didn't realize it's going to come on board right away, but hopefully you guys can hear me okay. Can I get a thumbs up? Okay, perfect. I will leave my video off. We've been having some intermittent latency issues. So hopefully, just for brand with purposes, this will work okay. And if there's any issues or interruptions, just feel free to let me know. So first and foremost, thank you so much for providing me the opportunity to speak with you today. Extended producer responsibility has become an issue that is really top of mind for both industry and government. And I think it's prudent that we attempt to better understand what EPR actually is and what it's intended to do. So, you know, what is EPR intended to do specifically for packaging waste? And so EPR is intended to encourage design for the environment by forcing producers to bear end of life management costs and meet recycled content quotas. The expectation is that producers will design their packaging in such a way that's more readily recyclable. EPR is intended to contain costs by shifting end of life management costs onto producers. They'll not only be incentivized to use more readily recyclable material, but do so in a way that minimizes material management costs. The shift in financial responsibility for municipalities to producers is also expected to result in taxpayer savings. EPR is also intended to encourage investments in recycling infrastructure to more efficiently capture and recycle lightweight composite materials. And lastly, EPR is intended to develop healthy and robust markets for problematic packaging materials such as lightweight and composite plastics, and for those who don't currently have robust end markets. So you know, with this in mind, it's really easy to see why EPR for printed paper and packaging is gaining traction. After all, there have been numerous successful models of EPR for things like waste electronics, mattresses, tires, etc. So what's the problem? The biggest issue is that packaging is atypical of other waste streams. Generally speaking, the technologies and infrastructure to recycle something like a mattress is relatively consistent to jurisdictions. But packaging is nothing like that. People may put it all in the same bin, but an aluminum can and plastic laminate pouch have virtually nothing in common. Packaging is a heterogeneous waste stream comprised of more than twenty eight individual materials that are considered obligated under existing EPR regulations. And in my opinion, there are three primary challenges to EPR for packaging waste. Lack of data, lack of harmonization, and lack of a clear goal. So lack of data is probably the biggest challenge. Data remains the bedrock of any effective policy. The more data you have, the better informed you are. But in many ways, good data is a non-negotiable prerequisite, as it is required to understand the size, scale, and scope of the issue. However, data, particularly for the waste management sector and printed paper and packaging in particular, is sparse, boring, and non-existent, which makes adopting EPR legislation enormously challenging. There's also issues with lack of harmonization. Both existing and proposed producer responsibility legislation is often jurisdiction specific due to site and situation-specific factors. A lack of harmonization makes it difficult for multinational producers to develop an appropriate strategy for meeting the regulatory obligations. And lastly, there's a lack of a clear goal. And so there's no clear consensus regarding what producer responsibility legislation should ultimately achieve. Oftentimes, we conflate recycling with sustainability, and some jurisdictions have used increased recycling rates as a barometer for success, while others, an example such as Oregon, have chosen to adopt a more holistic lifecycle approach that looks at a package's overall environmental footprint. So going back to the goals of EPR policy for a moment that I outlined earlier, in jurisdictions which have adopted EPR for packaging waste, have they achieved what they intended to do? You know, are they meeting their goals and objectives? And at least based on the examples in Canada, the answer is a resounding no. For the purposes of today's discussion, I'd like to focus on two points in particular. The relationship between EPR and savings for taxpayers and the impact of EPR on the price of consumer packaged goods. So, you know, does EPR contain costs and does it save taxpayers money? This is a common refrain made by advocates of EPR policy, as they're shifting costs away from municipalities onto producers. The answer is no. So jurisdictions which have adopted EPR for packaging waste in Canada, you know, they continue to observe significant increases in operational costs with year-over-year costs increasing by double digits. There is no evidence to suggest a decrease in property taxes or service levies resulting from the adoption of EPR policy. And both Ontario and B C have experienced year-over-year increases in property taxes for each of the past five years. And so the idea that a municipality will pass that savings on to households in the form of reduced taxes or service rates is often divorced from the resource constraint reality that we live in today. So, you know, I'm sure municipalities would like to, but they're often running on two string budgets to begin with. And so the idea that they will pass savings on to to consumers has never really borne out in reality, at least in Canadian jurisdictions. For all of the supposed cost benefits attributable to the adoption of EPR policy, there is no evidence to suggest that a producer-led system will be more efficient at operating a recycling program or containing costs. And I caught the tail end of the testimony from the last speaker. And she's very right. It's like, you know, EPR systems that are led by producers historically have been inefficient. But that's actually the model that we advocate for in Canada, that producers, if they're going to pay for the system, should have the keys to the system. And and that has a number of challenges. Perhaps the most contentious topic is whether EPR impacts the price of consumer packaged goods. And so Senator Todd Kaminsky of New York State has been quoted as saying the effect of EPR in raising consumer prices was infinitesimal and not anything anyone would notice. But that claim wasn't based on any actual evidence. There is one study conducted by RRS examining whether EPR impacts the price of consumer goods. And it's demonstrably flawed. The methodology was very incomplete, and this isn't even up for debate. The way in which the study was structured made it impossible to establish a causal relationship between EPR and the price of consumer packaged goods, and that was largely because they did not control for other exogenous factors. So the study design was limited, and as a result, it essentially arrived at erroneous conclusions. So by comparison, the university has conducted extensive research in this area. And I'm not saying that we're the gospel on this, but we we try to establish best practices and methodological design and, you know, study design. And what we were looking at was the direct, indirect, and induced effects of EPR on product prices. And while we can't conclusively quantify what that exact price increase would be, it's not infinitesimally small. Increases in costs worn by producers resulting from EPR legislation can manifest in the following ways. So that's costs being passed directly onto the consumer in the form of increased prices or reduction in product size. For those of you who may be familiar with the fee models that we use in Ontario and B C, any increase in system cost is immediately built into the price of packaged goods via the fee model. So once again, it's not a matter of debate. That's just the way the math works. Companies can either internalize those costs as well, you know, in the form of reduced investment, job losses, company contraction. Or there can be some combination thereof, you know, increased prices where producers can get away with it, cost savings or cost internalizations. But the most realistic scenario was some combination of both. In our study, we modeled increases in consumer prices for New York State using best available data. And when I say best available data, I I don't think our study overcame the the data limitations and paucity of reliable data that I highlighted earlier. We did the best with what we have, and that's why I really want to caution people from, you know, focusing specifically on the numbers. We we intended it to be directionally accurate. But our study did show a potential five to twelve percent increase in the price of packaged goods for average consumers, should New York State adopt a hundred percent producer responsibility legislation. Perhaps even more troubling is that this most adversely impacts low income families. So low income groups tend to consume more prepackaged goods as a relative proportion of all purchases. And as a result, any increase in the price of packaged goods, it's felt more acutely by very vulnerable families. And I've been involved in a lot of policy discussions, and I've always found the assertion that a couple of percent isn't a big deal. And I I find that not only to be disconnected from reality, but extraordinarily arrogant. A couple percent may not seem like a whole lot to you and I, but there's so many people living on the margin where they can't absorb any additional increases in the price of groceries or products that they buy. And I think that's true now more than ever. So inflationary pressures are causing double-digit increases in our cost of living. And any policy that can exacerbate this outcome should be approached with extreme caution. So once again, I I reiterate, that five to twelve percent figure that we estimated is a best guess using what data we could have. But we do know that there is some cost, and if we're adhering to the precautionary principle, now is not the time to test whether families can absorb a cost increase attributable to EPR. So lastly, is EPR an inevitability? And at one point, I would have said that EPR for packaging is inevitable. It's gained significant momentum behind EPR legislation in Oregon, Maine, Connecticut. So there's a lot of jurisdictions in the United States that are considering EPR legislation for packaging waste. But what's changed, though, is that as policy planners have adopted legislation or thinking about adopting legislation, they're quickly finding out that, you know, adopting legislation doesn't mean much, and actually trying to implement a system is significantly more difficult. And what I mean by that kind of goes back to the data question. So if a jurisdiction can't tell you how much packaging is being generated, how much is being recycled, what it costs to manage, who the obligated parties are steward sales. I literally have a list of fifty different data points that are required for calculating steward fees. If you don't have that baseline data, you can't implement effective legislation. And so adopting EPR legislation in advance of gathering this data is a bit of a hollow victory. Another thing that I think is often lost on advocates of EPR is that the administrative complexity and potential for what we call transactional externalities is enormous. I'll choose an expression. There's a lot of cooks in the kitchen when it comes to EPR policy and identifying whether you have a monopolistic model for a producer responsibility organization or competitive compliance model. And in Ontario and B C, we're kind of looking at all these different configurations, and what we're finding is, wow, this is really complex. And there are so many stakeholders and so many perspectives that the administrative externality of trying to coordinate an EPR program is quite costly, and that both in terms of time and in terms of money. And so what good is drafting legislation when the basic building blocks of implementing producer responsibility is not in place? And so that, oh, okay, there we go. So I guess I'll stop there.
You can finish up quickly if you like, Calvin.
I I have two paragraphs. So one thing I want to really stress is I have two paragraphs. So one thing I want to really stress is that prescriptive legislation should be avoided at all costs. Poorly designed legislation is ineffectual at best and dangerous at worst. And we want to create systems that are adaptive, resilient, and sustainable. And right now, producer responsibility in its current form has unintended consequences to the economy, the environment, and most importantly, people. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to present to you today.
Thanks so much, Calvin. We appreciate you coming and running. And as we are running slightly ahead of time, I'm going to ask L'Oreal to announce the next couple in advance moving forward, so people get a little bit more of a heads up. So who's next, L'Oreal?
Well, I actually have an announcement just to inform folks that the Spanish translation will conclude. And we wanted to thank Alda Arias for the service that she provided. Our next two speakers will be Michael Washburn, the Recycling Partnership, John Height, PhD candidate at Yale University.
Thanks, L'Oreal, and thank you to the Swabs. Are you able to hear me okay? Great.
Yes.
So I'm with the Recycling Partnership. By the way, a shout out to John Height, who's going to speak after me. I used to teach at the Yale School of Forestry, and so it's kind of fun to be in his company. And he's a fine student. I know him very well. So first, let me introduce the Recycling Partnership. For those who don't know us, we are a national nonprofit driven by our mission, which is to level up the U.S. recycling system. We do that through grant-making, through technical assistance, through education, and through stakeholder engagement that we think can feed informed, solutions-oriented policy. After seven years of being in existence, the Recycling Partnership concluded a couple of years ago that policy was really going to be required if we were going to meet our mission of driving a circular economy by making recycling as accessible to people as their trash can is to them today. So I'd like to refocus this conversation because a lot of the criticisms that we've heard about EPR, many of which are very well placed, have not spoken to the fact that the primary interest of an EPR system is to enhance and improve the quantity and quality of commodity materials that come out of the recycling system. And in this case, we're talking primarily about the residential curbside recycling system. So the theory of change with EPR is that we're going to take what has historically been a public sector service of providing recycling to citizens and change how that is delivered by asking something of the companies that put those materials into the market in the first place. If we're going to engage companies in that process, there's going to have to be some kind of administrative or institutional delivery mechanism that collects fees, allocates those fees effectively, and meets a goal. So that's the rationale for the producer responsibility organization. If not for a PRO, what we would effectively be talking about is continuing to deliver recycling only as a government function. That is a different construct than extended producer responsibility. So what the governor has proposed in her bill, which, by the way, we appreciate that the governor is showing leadership in this space, is that for the first time, we would actually call on companies to participate in the system. Two years ago, the partnership brought together some of our partners, and I should say that we work closely with very large brands. We also work closely with trade associations, groups like the American Beverage Association, and also commodity associations, groups like the Glass Packaging Institute, Can Manufacturing Institute, and others. But we also work closely with communities and other stakeholders across civil society. So we see ourselves as working with all the stakeholders across the entire recycling system. And I think that makes us unique in this conversation. A couple of years ago, recognizing that policy was going to be necessary in order to move the needle on recycling, we brought together about thirty companies in something called the Circular Economy Accelerator. And they developed a policy proposal, which you can find on our website, recyclingpartnership.org, that looks at the three pieces of the recycling, sort of the three buckets of cost: education, infrastructure, and operations. And we came out with a policy proposal that says industry in funding education and enhancement to infrastructure could participate in a shared responsibility system that would ultimately improve recycling. It falls short of what is proposed in New York in that our proposal did not include companies funding the actual operations and the collection of the materials. But importantly, eighteen companies support that policy that we agreed to about a year ago. Those companies include organizations like the American Beverage Association, companies like Nestle and Mars and Danone, companies like PepsiCo and others. So those eighteen organizations supporting that construct are evidence that major corporations actually do want to participate in the system. They actually do believe that policy is necessary to achieve a circular economy. And I want to share that with the group because I think we've gotten into a dynamic where there are different camps. And I don't think any successful system is going to emerge if we're busy pointing fingers at the other stakeholders in the system as though they somehow don't belong as part of the solution set. If you look at EPR globally, there are over fifty countries that have some kind of EPR system for packaging. It's been in Europe for a couple of decades. It's emerging in Canada, as we've heard. It doesn't seem to me that it would be so popular as a global instrument for addressing recycling needs if it actually wasn't working. What we've seen is that the most effective systems globally do put a substantial amount of control with the industry, but they regulate that industry to a specific goal, and they hold the industry accountable by having robust regulatory enforcement. It's also true that the systems need to be material inclusive. So we've heard a lot about plastics. There are very real issues around plastics in the environment that need a solution. But the recycling system, as we've built it in this country to date, is a system that also captures metals and glass and paper. And we think a robust EPR system should do all of that. It should not be a single material system or a single material solution. And importantly, a lot of the companies whom I mentioned need the commodity materials that can come from a better recycling system. They've pledged because of investor pressure or sustainability goals to include post-consumer recycled content in their packaging. When they turn to the system to get those commodities, our recycling programs are not delivering those materials nearly enough or at the level of quality that's required. So there's a built-in incentive for these companies because they have to meet the expectations of their investors and their public-facing goals to improve the recycling system. A lot's been said specific to the governor's proposal. I won't repeat some of the very good suggestions. I do want to call out two things that I think increase the likelihood of success. One is balancing how the D E C and industry-led P R O and an advisory committee might interact. That should be a three-way consultation. The P R O certainly should be, by statute, comprised of the responsible brands. The D E C should be funded to have a robust enforcement capacity. And the Advisory Council should be comprised of environmental justice interests, community interests, those who do not have a seat at the table at the P R O, so that all of those voices can inform a system
One minute.
delivering good recycling outcomes and respects all interests in the local communities. Thirty seconds and I'll wrap. Another issue in the bill is it calls on the producer responsibility organization to handle the minimum post-consumer recycled content standard. That has to do with how companies buy material in an open market. You really can't centralize that in a single organization. That's going to raise some antitrust issues. So what I'm hearing from stakeholders is that they're fairly attracted to how Senator Kaminsky's bill last year laid out some of these issues, both around the advisory committee, the construction of the P R O and other things. So I think if we can discuss how to move the governor's bill in that direction, I think we'll find a lot more industry support. And the Recycling Partnership stands ready to work with the legislature and the governor and the department to try to get to a good system that works for all the stakeholders. So thank you. Sorry to go a little over time. Look forward to more conversation. Thanks.
That's great, Michael. Thank you very much for your contribution. L'Oreal, who have we got up next?
Up next is John Height, PhD candidate, Yale University, and following him will be Tracy Frisch, Zero Waste Warren County.
Excellent. Thanks so much, L'Oreal, and thanks so much, chairs and members of the Solid Waste Advisory Boards. Thank you so much for the invitation to provide testimony before you today regarding the governor's proposed Title Thirty-Three. My name is John Height. I should set the record straight. I'm not actually a PhD candidate at the School of the Environment. I am, in fact, just a lowly master's in environmental management candidate pending this spring. However, in the years preceding my return to academia and during my time at Yale, I've been engaged in advocacy for and policy development of several New England state EPR for packaging laws, including a current position as a consultant with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. As I'm neither an employee nor resident in the state of New York, I will not position myself in support or opposition to Title Thirty-Three, but it is both my personal and professional opinion that EPR for packaging offers important opportunities to meaningfully impact the quantity and quality of packaging materials entering homes and municipalities, along with the attendant potential environmental benefits of less packaging and better material management systems. In testifying before you today, I'd like to first clarify a bit from my own perspective what EPR for packaging is and what it isn't. And then second, I'd like to address some of the specific questions that the Solid Waste Advisory Board members provided prior to the hearing today, along with a couple of my own recommendations for changes to the legislation as it currently stands to the best of my ability. I do hear the concerns with Title Thirty-Three. I think there are a lot of valid concerns that have already been raised throughout the day-to-day, and I don't take them lightly. Neither do I think EPR is a perfect solution. I think this has already been done, but I want to clarify the problem we're here to solve. And then we can assess the options before us to build a theory of change into which EPR might fit. As someone concerned with the environment and human health, I see EPR set against a larger backdrop to just functional recycling programs. I don't need to go into detail about the exponential rise in ocean plastics, bioaccumulation of microplastics, toxic PFOS and endocrine-disrupting synthetics, and living bodies, landfill capacity, incinerator emissions, and all driven by a growing amount of variably recyclable and ever-changing consumer goods and packaging flooding, underfunded recycling programs with little information about the quantity makeup or toxicity of that packaging. So that's a lot. And how are we going to address that? I think there are many options before us. A lot have been mentioned today. But I do think that EPR will play a central and important role in addressing these critical concerns. At a minimum, EPR will inject funding into recycling programs. It'll provide relief to municipal budgets and ideally increase recycling rates based on analysis of other jurisdictions. I've seen EPR for packaging achieve those goals elsewhere. But I think a much wider opportunity exists, and that's really key. By collecting data on the whole packaging stream and engaging producers in a careful assessment of end markets, problematic packaging can be addressed with a vision towards a much wider swath of the packaging stream. By setting strong performance standards, and I'll talk more about those in a moment, New York can make meaningful progress towards reducing packaging, improving recyclability and recycling, and building out the infrastructure for reuse and recycling. But most importantly, I believe that EPR for packaging creates a space or a forum that does not currently exist for packaging producers, regulators, municipal government, waste management companies, environmental advocates, environmental justice representatives, and the public to discuss, implement, critique, and improve the entire packaging system. So to bring these points into the budget proposal, first off, the advisory committee, I think an active and engaged advisory committee is arguably the most important regulatory device to employ for an EPR program. Sunshine is the best antidote. Ideally, the advisory committee is the forum where all interested parties are able to meet, discuss, shed light on and critique program plans and operation. The advisory committee should be regularly consulted on plan development and program operation. However, the advisory committee is made up of many diverse stakeholders, as we've heard today. And it is my opinion that the advisory committee should therefore not be given voting power to ensure its functionality. Section twenty-seven thirty-three oh five subsection six requires that a majority of members vote in favor of recommendations, which I would eliminate in favor of D E C approval of a plan and program changes, which takes into consideration all comments from the advisory committee, not just those that meet a fifty percent approval by the entire committee. This both eliminates the need to hem and haw over advisory committee makeup, which I believe should be robustly representative of municipalities and environmental groups and environmental justice organizations, and allows all comments to be submitted to the D E C for consideration. The advisory committee will also be a critical forum for raising other issues that I'll address below. The second would be performance standards. We've heard this already today from a number of different folks. Strong performance standards are key, especially strong performance standards to which a stewardship organization is accountable. High recovery and recycling goals will drive investments in collection, sorting capacity, reduced contamination, and education to make sure the program achieves those goals. Title Thirty-Three currently has three performance standards, which are recommended by the advisory committee to the D E C: a recovery rate, a recycling rate, and a minimum post-consumer recycled content rate. As with recommendations that I made regarding section twenty-seven thirty-three oh five subsection six, this discussion over what those rates should be is likely to be very fraught. Rates might instead be developed through regulation and reviewed by the advisory committee with final approval by the D E C. Further, it's my opinion that performance goals for overall packaging reduction and reuse must be included. These are key. Even if reuse targets are small at first, a goal, the existence of a goal, can drive attention and funding into nascent reuse programs. Lastly, strong performance standards alleviate the barriers to other legislation. Disparate conversations about recycled content, material bans, and management technologies can be had in one place in the public eye between producers, material processors, and representatives of communities and the environment in a flexible and dynamic way. Thirdly, recycling definition. As many have said, I think the recycling definition as it currently stands in Title Thirty-Three could use some work. Performance standards for collection and recycling must be situated within this definition. All recycling methods, be they mechanical or chemical, that result in fuel or energy recovery of any kind should not be considered recycling. Further, recycling should be measured at the point when recovered material re-enters a furnace, pulp mill, smelter, or extruder, as opposed to the back end of a MRF. In theory, this point of measurement will incentivize management methods which maximize material retention. Fourthly, conversations of recycling, as they have all day, lead directly into discussions of advanced or chemical recycling. It is my opinion that some advanced or chemical recycling technologies present a credible moral hazard in the preservation of fossil fuel-based plastic and unsustainable plastic use. However, I also recognize that these technologies, which cover a broad set of management methods, are unlikely to be banned or prevented. So what do we do in that event? In the event a stewardship organization chooses to invest in processing other than mechanical recycling, high-performance standards and a strong definition of recycling might be supported in Title Thirty-Three by the addition of explicit planning and reporting processes for non-mechanical recycling infrastructure to ensure that other options have been exhausted. These are critically missing from the current draft of Title Thirty-Three. Eco-modulation. Eco-modulated fees are heralded as the keystone environmental provision in state EPR laws, given the steps planned and taken by packaging producers to improve packaging. Eco-modulation of fees is likely to support ongoing voluntary corporate efforts at sustainable improvement and ensure that conversations regarding packaging sustainability occur within a larger public dialogue. I understand that it is very difficult, as Calvin said, to set prescriptive goals through eco-modulation. But I believe that leaving eco-modulation flexible to allow those conversations to play out over multiple jurisdictions will create better standards. um will create uh better standards that will develop. Um, third, um. It is, I I I hear a lot of the concerns with the PRO and the power of a PRO and the power of a PR to reshape recycling. Um, I, I tried to do a quick read-through of the law before I testified in order to double-check, but I know that the current uh the bill that was drafted for last session in New York, uh one one eight five C, allowed municipalities to have the right of first refusal for participation in the program. I think that, if it is not in uh Title Thirty Three, the governor's proposal must be included. That is key. Um, I think that is a key way that municipalities are able to protect their programs, maintain ownership and responsibility over their programs while receiving needed funds uh from producers. Um, in the absence of a municipal program, for instance, upstate New York where subscription programs are heavy, that is where I think it makes sense to have a PRO negotiating and working directly with a hauler. Um. In the interest of time, I've got just a couple more paragraphs left, so I'll skip quickly through, but I believe transparency is a a point that has been talked about quite a bit. Um. In the event the Title Thirty Three passes, in the event that PRO is formed and an advisory committee is also formed, I think it will be key for uh everyone who's has spoken today and for the Solid Waste Advisory Board to make sure that they stay vigilant and attentive uh and responsive throughout the operation of an EPR for packaging program. Um, it will be a live program. It will be a program that uh moves in different directions based on uh what folks um provide in terms of input. Uh, it will be important that the Solid Waste Advisory Board uh remain vigilant around the annual reports and the annual audits, both financial and material, that are conducted and submitted to the DEC uh to ensure that the PRO um and uh waste haulers and MRFs um are finding good markets, are working through responsible markets in line with the goals and with the guardrails um that are in place throughout the rest of the legislation. Um, I'll end by saying that I just want to echo and go on the record uh supporting what others have said about maintaining the deposit return program in New York. It should be updated. It should be expanded. Um, deposit return programs uh are are successful um and have worked well, and uh EPR should not be a replacement for deposit return. The two should work hand in hand. So with that, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and uh look forward to hearing what others have to say.
Thank you very much, John, for your input, and thanks for the clarification about your academic status as well. Um, L'Oreal, who do we have next?
We have Tracy Frisch from Zero Waste Warren County, New York.
Hi, um, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm going to keep my camera off because I'm in rural upstate New York, and we do not have good Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi up here. I already lost um the link with the the Zoom meeting a little earlier. Um, I'm Tracy Frisch, a longtime citizen activist and the founder of Zero Waste um and the convener of Zero Waste Warren County, a grassroots group on the southern edge of the Adirondacks. I've been a um waste geek for more than thirty years, so this is a really fun event for me. Um, so I oppose Governor Hokel's extended producer responsibility for packaging bill. It was, it would establish a poorly designed polluter control program that would not bring about the outcomes it promises. The number one flaw of this bill is that it relies on industry to regulate itself, and we all know how well self-regulation works. Um. Scientists, journalists, and environmental activists have done an amazing job of illuminating the issues of microplastics and other types of pollution and health hazards from plastic, from pollution, from production to disposal. As a result, pressure is building on corporations and public officials to take action on this plastic nightmare. I strongly agree that we must reduce the wanton proliferation of plastic and and other wastes, starting with single-use plastics in packaging and food service. However, in the ensuing panic to act and get an EPR law enacted, if we do not proceed with care, we risk being saddled with a disastrous program that would only prolong the production, use, and disposal of single-use packaging and all its associated program pro- problems. Um, I won't talk about how this um legislation could undermine the bottle bill. Um. I'm worried about the the powerful entity called a producer responsibility organization that the bill would create. Um. We do not need a nonprofit made up of corp- corporations and endowed by the state with the right to regulate itself and its corporate production producer members. If you hold dear democratic decision-making, opportunities for public input, transparency, and the rule of law, please forget about it if this bill is passed. Um, if we are truly looking for a solution to the growing problem of wasteful packaging as New Yorkers, we need to call on our state to build on its recent successes. In twenty twenty one, the state implemented its ban on single-use grocery bags. This year, another state ban went into effect on expanded polystyrene for food containers in retail and food service and for packing peanuts. Um, the state did not ask supermarket chains to band together in a PRO and figure out how to manage their plastic grocery bags over the next few years. It did not ask restaurants to form a producer responsibility organization to come up with a plan for expanded polystyrene takeout containers. Legislators sponsored bills to ban these materials, citizens and corporations weighed in, and these bills were passed, signed into law, and subsequently implemented. If we want to eliminate single-use packaging, especially that made out of plastic, we should build on the proven model. Bans are not the only model that is proven to be effective. I I won't go into the state bottle bill, but I will accept to say that the bottle bill provides probably the one of the only clean supplies of glass for recycling in New York. Um, there are many things that are broken with our recycling um system, one of them being single stream, which um which generates a glass stream that is far too contaminated to meet the stringent standards of glass furnaces. If we want to really address what's broken in New York, we don't need a PRO, which will be made up of members who have no uh who who do not understand um the real, the the real world of recycling. Um, there are many of us who have spent um many hours to learn to understand it, and no one is consulting us. Um, and we do not need an EPR bill to give citizens and other other people who have developed expertise a role to um weigh in. Um, I'm going to skip the bottle bill um things that I've written about. Okay, so I propose the following recommendations as alternatives to the EPR bill. Let's consider bans on all plastic resins that are not readily and widely recycled through existing curbside programs. So that would be everything but one, two, and maybe five, because nothing else has any chance of being recycled. Um, last year, last year, the state of California enacted a ban, a law that prohibits the use of the chasing arrow arrows recycling sign on materials that are not actually being recycled. Why not do that here? Let's establish a minimum recycled content standard and mandate a process for verifying the recycled content. This is no longer a pie in the sky idea. Uh, for instance, the government of Canada has set a goal of at least fifty percent recycled content in plastic products by twenty thirty. We should be doing the same. The pla- the packaging industry has been very innovative, but unfortunately, many of its innovations have made recycling more difficult rather than increased recyclability. Composite materials are hard to or are hard to recycle or even impossible to recycle, and therefore should be phased out. The bill also fails to phase out or ban the use of hazardous chemical additives in or on packaging, despite the fact that such chemicals complicate recycling, in addition to posing health risks to the people and ecosystems of the state. Um, so this should, this should be done outside of an EPR bill. The state should just do it. Um, I just, uh something, one of the these types of PFOS chemicals, as we know, have been additives and coatings on all kinds of containers. Um, it was discovered a year or so ago that pesticide products were were um put in containers with PFOS when a mosquito insecticide widely used in a government mosquito abatement program was found to have be highly contaminated with PFOS chemicals. Um, so much for protecting our waterways. So, um, the state has the power to assess fees and ta- and and taxes and regulate the activities and people of people and businesses. The state should never turn this power over to unelected entities composed of corporations, but sadly, that is exactly what the CPR bill would do. Um. I, um, the only oversight on the PRO or the PROs, as would be possible through this bill, would come from overworked DEC employees and an unpaid business-heavy advisory board. Also, the convoluted structure of the EPR program would make it very difficult to hold either the PROs or the producer members accountable for their actions and for their failures to act. I am in good company in questioning EPR that includes PROs. Then the National Recycling Coalition, the National Sierra Club, and the Global Alliance for Incineration Alternatives all oppose any producer, any extended producer responsibility legislation that includes PROs. So let's take, let's take a step back and examine the logic of PR of the PRO. I'll ask you to do a simple thought experiment. Imagine that the PRO approach was used um that is used in this EPR bill had been used as a means to end child labor in the early twentieth century. Under this approach, the legislature would have passed a law that directed businesses using child labor to form a nonprofit. Let's call this nonprofit an employer responsibility organization. This ERO would have assessed fees from all the companies that use child labor and would have been charged with creating and implementing a plan to phase out child labor or to somehow make child labor less objectionable. The ERO would also be charged with educating children, families, and the general public about child labor, just as in Hokel's bill. Each PRO is charged with educating the public about how to manage packaging. The ERO's educational materials might have called out poor families for sending their children to work in factories and sweatshops, just as PROs under the EPR bill might blame lazy cons- consumers for not recycling packaging. EROs would probably have come up with all kinds of ways to make child labor seem more benign, like printing propaganda about how children learn important skills and the meaning of responsibility by working. Maybe EROs would have convinced some of their member companies to include a few hours of a week of basic schooling for some of their underage workers to counter the, I'm going to hurry up. Okay. Uh, you get, you get the picture. Um, I'm I'm very pleased that Calvin Lackin um testified, and so I will not talk about how EPR in British Columbia and in Ontario failed miserably to have the desired impacts. Um, I want to end by by noting some of the other actions to support and improve recycling and waste reduction that the state should take. The state should expand and update the bottle bill and and include refillable requirements with numerical goals and timelines. The state should also do or commission a comparative study of the economics and actual actual rates of materials recycled in dual stream versus single stream recycling. If we want to boost the 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 percentage of materials that are actually reprocessed into light commodities, we need to return to dual stream recycling. The state should require transparency in recycling so that recycling programs can be evaluated in terms of the percentage of materials that gets successfully reprocessed. I'm going to uh end and and just say a few more things, and the rest will be in my testimony. Um, what good is drafting legislation when the building blocks are not there? That's what Calvin Lackin said. And I just want to say that a needs assessment in the state of New York at present would be virtually impossible. There is, in my, in Warren County, a recycling rate cannot be calculated at this time because recycling is is primarily in the hands of private haulers and private mer- privately owned MRFs. And there is, there has not been that kind of transparency. Um, there, um. Municipal um reimbursement is not very possible in many upstate counties because municipalities and counties have washed their hands uh from solid waste and recycling. There is so much that is, anyway, I can, I will just end. The state must not devolve its responsibilities to a private entity to do its job. The governor's EPR bill is any democratic and contrary to the principles of our nation. Experience in in British Columbia and Ontario show that this, that it will not work. We can and must do better with our policy choices. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tracy, for joining us and for your testimony. L'Oreal, who do we have next?
We have uh testimonials from concerned citizen Joyce Bialik.
Is Joyce with us? Ah, yes, I see you, Joyce. Hi. We can't hear you. You're muted at present. No, still mute. Try again. There we go.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, participants at this hearing. I respectfully submit my comments on Title Thirty Three Extended Producer Responsibility Program. In full disclosure, I am a member of the Manhattan Solid Waste Advisory Board, but I speak today as concerned citizen Joyce Bialik, and my concerns stem from my background, both as a professor of social welfare and as a former program evaluator for the city of New York. So as.
Joyce, sorry, if I could briefly interrupt, you are, um, you're obscuring your your webcam with your notes.
Oh.
Not that it's, not that it's crucial, but uh it's slightly distracting.
Okay, now I know where the webcam is.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, so, um, but I'm gonna um continue because you heard my first part. So as written, Title Thirty Three does not sufficiently balance the concerns of the public against the concerns of producers. The program under Title Thirty Three is about recovering and recycling of packaging and paper products, and responsibility for implementing the program rests with individual producers or with a collective group of produ- producers under what the bill calls a producer responsibility organization or PRO. The bill does not provide for adequate um for reasonable oversight over the individual or collective producers, as I will describe. So I'm going to focus on oversight issues. First, the bill does not include a means to enforce PRO membership according to its membership requirements. The bill requires that its members represent a diversity of producers, covered materials, and product types, and include non-voting members representing a diversity of material trade associations. But the bill does not require review of the PRO membership by either the advisory committee or the department, which it should. My other concern is about the vast number of entities that could be implementing an EPR program and the difficulty of monitoring them. In the bill, EPR programs can be implemented not only by PROs but also by individual producers. So here we were talking about PROs, but individual producers have so much control in the program. This could result in very large numbers of separate programs that both the advisory group and department are required to oversee. They will be expected to review each program's response to how it plans to implement the program. The separate items that each program must address and plans cover approximately eight pages of the bill. And then the advisory committee and the department are to assess the extent to which each program operates according to its plans. Quite a lot of work. For adequate oversight over producers and PROs, I suggest that the bill structure a system that limits the number of entities eligible for implementing the program. And one way to do this is to eliminate single producers as potential program operators and to specify a minimum number of producers within a single PRO. The lack of structure for program eligibility does not occur in other EPR bills I've seen. Oregon Maine and Beyond Plastics Model Bill are examples. So with the Oregon bill, it says, with the exception of small producers, each producer must register with and be a member of the PRO that administers a producer responsibility program. In both the EPR for Maine and Beyond Plastics Model Bill, a single P-
a single PRO is described, and it's selected by the department, not by the producers. In Maine, the PRO is called the Packaging Stewardship Organization. And consistent with the requirements of this, it says, "Consistent with the requirements of this subsection, the department shall select and enter into a contract with the Packaging Stewardship Organization to operate the Packaging Stewardship Program under this section." Similar wording for the Model Bill. So the fact that the bill, under consideration, allows for great many separate programs makes a thorough program review extremely difficult to carry out. This bill, however, has the opportunity to create a system that addresses the health and environmental concerns of the public as they protect packaging. The public is concerned about such issues as reducing the amount of single-use packaging, ensuring that packaging is readily recyclable and devoid of toxic chemicals. The public also favors the bottle bill and is opposed to any measures that might limit it. Producers necessarily are concerned about profit, but the bill does not create a structure that can adequately protect the interests of the public. I've suggested a few ways that the EPR bill can address the imbalance of control between producers and the public and ensure that each EPR program can be appropriately monitored. So we've heard today, I mean, talk about, we've heard today talk about how Title 33 should more specifically define pro-environmental packaging. However, in addition to language that defines the actions the public expects of producers, we need the structure that will enable regulation of their actions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joyce. And I believe we're down to our last few speakers. L'Oreal, who do we have next?
Our next guest is Maggie Clark, Concerned Citizen.
Hello. So, yes, I'm called Concerned Citizen today. Maggie Clark, PhD, consultant educator, scientist, in zero waste for over 30 years, chair of several of the committees of the Manhattan SWAB and National Recycling Coalition, speaking on my own today. My written version of these remarks includes far more critiques and recommendations than the five minutes I have will allow. Oh, good. That's another meeting I'm supposed to be at. So I, I hope you'll find those other more written comments useful. The legislative intent as written for this bill only speaks to end-of-life management. The purpose should be to minimize environmental impact of solid waste management. This bill doesn't do that. We've lost the original purpose of EPR, which is minimizing lifecycle impacts. Waste prevention was its original purpose back in the 90s in Europe. It should incentivize producers to better design their products so that less material is produced and more can be repurposed or recycled while penalizing non-circular products. And it's important to remember, for every pound a consumer throws away, that's the downstream, there's 70 pounds of waste generated upstream of consumption. So focusing on end-of-life misses most of the waste. Therefore, any EPR bill should require that if a product can't be reused, repaired, rebuilt, refurbished, refinished, resold, recycled, or composted, then it should be restricted, redesigned, or removed from production. EPA Waste Characterization Data Trends show that the waste stream is growing faster than recycling can catch up. We can't recycle our way out of this. There has to be reduced consumption and more reuse. If reuse requirements are not part of this legislation, there will be little or no progress in this sector. Washington's bill requires all packaging, sorry, all packaging and paper products sold in Washington to be designed for reuse, recycling, or composting by 2031. Quote, "If it's not, it should no longer be produced." "I'm very emphatic about that," said State Senator Mona Doss, a sponsor of the bill. "Producers would make payments based on how easy it is to recycle their materials, how much packaging they're putting into Washington." This sounds like a more sensible approach. Title 33 only asks for a description of how a producer will reduce packaging, but it does not ensure that any particular level of reduction will happen. What is the minimum reduction of packaging that will be required? Is there enforcement or penalties? On what basis would the department deny a plan for insufficient reduction or reuse? On what basis would the department seek to remedy of producers' insufficient progress towards reduction or reuse? Turning to the needs assessment, it requires measurement of consumer education needs for recycling reuse and reduction of covered materials and products, which sounds very good, but this can mean pretty much anything. In New York City, only about half the available recyclables are collected. How will the assessment include the efficacy of different approaches to education? Will education be especially targeted at resistant populations? Will there be research to understand why certain populations are resistant? And what approaches are successful? Will pilots testing different approaches be recommended and part of the needed studies? Will the effectiveness of education programs be studied annually? Will the most successful jurisdictions' education programs be studied and adapted for New York? Will enforcement programs be assessed? They should be, but I'm not sure they will. Waste characterization studies that measure the capacity for waste prevention and reuse are needed. They only measure recycling and organics at the moment, for the most part. The MSWAB has testified many times since 1989 that durable items like furniture, appliances, electronics, clothing, shoes, and books and subcategories should be measured. Study of non-durable categories is needed also. Packaging and container types need to be measured as well. EPA measured all of these in their waste characterization reports. Characterizing weight, type, and condition of durables gives a picture of reuse capacity left at the curbside. Then reuse infrastructure, collection programs, and repair facilities can be sized and designed. Study of non-durable packaging categories can point out the prevalence of hard-to-recycle and toxic items. Then we can develop laws to ban or otherwise disincentivize marketing of non-circular packaging and products. The needs assessment accounts for greenhouse gases, only looking downstream. EPA has determined that half the carbon emissions to the atmosphere comes from the production, transportation, and use of consumer products, packaging, and food. Therefore, zero-waste programs can address half of the climate change problem. New York residents create product demand and create carbon emissions. Upstream reduction is key. The department has been given a lot of oversight work to do, rightly so. Will it have the staff to do this now and in the future? Who will pay for the staff, the producers or the public? Regarding the advisory committee, there should be at least one member from a solid waste advisory board, as you can see from what we're doing here. There should be no producers on the advisory committee due to potential for conflicts of interest or self-dealing. The advisory committee should be directed in this legislation to set mandates for eventually achieving close to 100% diversion from disposal. The way it is now, we have no idea where this is headed. There should be minimum requirements for guidelines on reporting and transparency so as to ensure that data is reliable, with penalties for producers that do not produce high-accuracy reports transparently to the public. There is clearly need for more than Title 33 provides to reduce and reuse more incentives like statewide pay-as-you-throw and tax credits for more circular packaging designs, disincentives such as fees on poor designs or outright bans, and properly-designed education programs. Finally, all producer responsibility program plans and PRO and advisory committee reports should be made public as soon as they are finalized. The public should have a comment period to provide input to the department.
Thank you very much, Maggie. We have one or possibly two speakers left. I don't know whether we managed to get her back in the, in the session in time. So I'll leave it to L'Oreal to hand over to hopefully the penultimate speaker.
We have an additional person, John Johnson, from Inner City Green, who'll be speaking. Mr. Johnson?
Here we go. Yes, I am here. Hello, everyone. Good evening. In the spirit of time, I'll just read my testimony. I hope it was well with everyone out there. And I'd like to thank the SWAB for the attention to this issue and your support, as well as the invitation to speak today. My name is John Johnson, and I'm the co-founder of the Inner City Green Team. That's ICGT. We're a nonprofit environmental organization with a focus on poverty alleviation and community development. Our mission is to help protect the environment and transform the lives of New York City Housing Authority residents, or NICA, through improved recycling, in fact, a door-to-door recycling collection program, job training, education, and paid work that can lead to a lifetime of employment and civic engagement. We are working to create an effective, reputable, and sustainable recycling infrastructure at NICA, with job creation and community revitalization at its core. Inner City Green Team works within NICA, where over 500,000 New Yorkers call home. That's one in 14 of us. It's a city with a city, and in terms of population, it would rank the 32nd largest city somewhere around the size of Atlanta or Miami. 90% of its residents are African-American, and every year, over 133 million pounds of recyclable material is generated by NICA, and the capture rate is only 1.5%. We must prioritize the health of, we believe, excuse me. I'm sorry. We believe, we believe in EPR. From an environmental justice perspective, there's a significant EJ implications from the manufacturing of much of our packaging, especially plastics, that disproportionately harm low-income communities and communities of color. Many of where these factories are located, producers must be held accountable at the end of life as well, where much of it ends up in landfills and incinerator, disproportionately located in and around these vulnerable communities. We must prioritize the health of all people and the planet. Public health must be protected by prioritizing frontline communities, fence-line communities, and other vulnerable populations. Environmental and human rights cannot be compromised by business interests. Corporate responsibility and accountability should be mandated, and producers should pay them to remedy the negative externalities caused by their products. I believe EPR is a step in the right direction. EPR could help close the loop, especially in black and brown communities. One of the ideas that we had in terms of where we could actually use funding is to provide reverse vending machines for every NICA development to ensure that not only will it provide more convenient access and opportunities to recycling, but would also ensure that these folks in our society who we need the most get every penny they deserve. The recycling system in these communities are broken, and producers need to step up to help fix it. After all, they play a major role in creating the problem, and they should be held responsible to help find a solution. The Inner City Green Team is creating a more equitable, accessible, and effective recycling program in public housing by drastically overhauling the current system that has been plagued by years of disinvestment and neglect. We feel that producers should help support approaches like ours that foster more robust recycling programs, especially in communities of color like NICA, if we are to move towards a more inclusive and equitable circular economy and just society. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, John, for your testimony. I think we might be done in terms of speakers as our final speaker. We haven't been able to get back online in time. That was, I believe, Diana Blackwell. Was it, L'Oreal?
Yes. Although we do have an additional individual who is present, Mary Arnold.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for that. Take it away then, Mary.
Thank you for this opportunity to testify. My name is Mary Arnold, speaking today for Civics United for Railroad Environmental Solutions. We are a community-based Queens nonprofit that has been advocating for modernization of the freight rail system in New York City and Greater Long Island since 2009. We are a member of the Queens Solid Waste Advisory Board. Title 33 is critically important because the New York City region's massive waste export is harming community health, environment, and quality of life at every step of the waste supply chain. However, our experiences with adverse unintended consequences of new types of waste management on communities raises red flags for us about Title 33. We are concerned that Title 33 doesn't give the public sufficient oversight and input over the administration of the program. We question whether the bill sufficiently addresses the amount of single-use packaging, toxic contents in packaging, and the disposition of packaging, for example, the possibility of simply sending toxic packaging to burners. Experience has shown us that strong public oversight and input are needed to ensure that new waste management systems don't simply become profitable new sources of pollution, waste export to industrial landfills, burners, and digesters, and community harms. According to the New York Metropolitan Transportation Council's latest regional transportation plan, waste and scrap is the number-one export by tonnage from the region. In the very near future, legislation that addresses other types of waste also should be considered, as Title 33 is doing. An example would be landfill construction waste, including gypsum wallboard that produces toxic gas. Construction and demolition tonnage already dwarfs municipal and commercial waste exports and is projected to increase. This waste export burden is falling on the same communities every day and especially on environmental justice communities. They are still being targeted for new and expanded waste facilities and increased tonnage in the New York City area, including for so-called green waste facilities. New Jersey is putting into place, under its new lawn regulations, protections against cumulative pollution impacts on environmental justice communities. Where is New York State's commitment to protecting environmental justice communities from cumulative pollution impacts? An egregious example that shows why public input and oversight are needed for Title 33 and other so-called green waste streams is Winters Brothers' proposed waste-by-rail transfer station in the town of Brookhaven. Winters is presenting waste by rail to landfills as a way to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Statistics about reductions are cherry-picked without disclosure of all local impacts or net emissions throughout the system that would result from operation of the new facility. Winters' ploy to circumvent local and state requirements for citing the transfer station and outflank multiple competitors, including foreign investors who have entered the thriving New York City area waste market, is a loophole that the United States Department of Transportation, Service Transportation Board created in response to the Clean Railroads Act of 2008. Thankfully, Governor Hokel and Congress member Swazi have asserted the rule of New York State law, including the right of the affected environmental justice communities to participate and make inputs into land use decisions. However, because there is inadequate public right of oversight and input over the increasing use of waste by rail, communities from the transfer station to the landfill are unnecessarily harmed. Problems emanate from the Department of Environmental Conservation's outmoded and lax solid waste management planning, with leadership defaulted to haulers. The department calls open-air operations at transfer stations with three walls and a roof that emit blow-off and leachate, fully enclosed. High-polluting 1970s freight locomotives, which were grandfathered out of the Clean Air Act, operate within the MTA's public right-of-way, resulting in the excess NOx pollution of more than a million cars. Problems like New York City's Alabama poop train and the death stench in Mechanicville recently result from the use of railcars that were not designed to contain potable, potable waste and odors for as long as it takes to get to their destination. Waste, blow-off, leachate, and odors come from open railcars- Waste blow-off, leachate, and odors come from open railcars of construction and demolition debris that some on the New York State Assembly's Environmental Conservation Committee have tried to contain by cosponsoring legislation. As we hope you can see from this example, even with so-called green waste management, the devil is in the details. New York State needs strong public input, oversight, report-back provisions, and the capacity to respond to unintended consequences in order to protect communities and the environment long term through Title 33. Please amend it. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mary, for that testimony. I believe that we have reached the end of our available testimony, so I'm going to, is that, is that right, L'Oreal?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I'm gonna hand back over to, to Matt from Manhattan SWAB and Rhonda from Brooklyn SWAB for a wrap-up. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, Oliver, and thank you to everyone who has stayed to the end, and thank you to all the folks that gave testimony today. And I hope that this makes the process better, and we're gonna use this information, I think, forward to, for the information up to, I guess, all the internal legislators here in the city. And we'll formulate maybe some policy from all of this at some point in the near future. So I want to thank everyone for their input and their help. And Rhonda, do you have some closing thoughts?
No, I just want to say thank you to everyone from the SWABs who pitched in and helped. And thanks to the legislators who were here, if there are any still left. And we will be sending transcript and recording of this up to the legislators so they can understand the concerns that people have.
I also want to say thank you to L'Oreal.
Thank you very much.
Her work today was amazing and kept this thing on course.
Yes, and Liz Roseman, who was behind the scenes also, and Oliver, thank you very much.
And to Dior and to Amy, the other two, the SWAB chairs from the Bronx and Queens. So everyone, thank you very much for this evening, and we will see you later at a next SWAB meeting.
Yes. Thank you. Bye, everybody.